As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I'd like to ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this state. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Two items. One, we'd like to remove item three F from the consent agenda. And we would like to add an action under six A for the wastewater allocation approval.
All right, I have that noted. With those notations and corrections being made, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like some. Motion carries. Up next, excuse me, up next, under introductions and special presentations, will be the retirement of Detective Pat Miller. And at this time, I would like to read a proclamation. Whoops. Actually, I just missed the entire consent agenda, and I do have my glasses on, so I have no excuse. All right. I'll entertain the motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like some. Motion carries. Now, under introduction and special presentations, the first item will be the retirement of Detective Pat Miller. And at this time, I'd like to read a resolution. Resolution, awarding badge and service weapon to retiring police officer. Whereas North Carolina general statute twenty dash one eighty seven point two provides that retiring members of municipal law enforcement agencies may receive at the time of their retirement, the badge worn or carried by them during their service with the municipality. And whereas North Carolina general statute twenty dash one eighty seven point two further provides that the governing body of that municipal law enforcement agency may, in its discretion, award a retiring member the service weapon of such retiring member. And whereas Detective Patrick Miller began his law enforcement career with the Raleigh Police Department in July of nineteen ninety six, Detective Miller began working with the Clayton Police Department in September of nineteen ninety eight as a patrol officer, and has served as a detective on the Special Operations Division for the past fifteen years of his career. His effective retirement date is May first, two thousand and twenty four, with twenty-eight years of law enforcement service officer for the state of North Carolina, where he has served the town of Clayton for over twenty-five years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Clayton Town Council that the badge and service weapon worn and or carried by Detective Patrick Miller be awarded to him on his retirement duly adopted this sixth day of May, two thousand and twenty-four, while in regular session. And on behalf of the town of Clayton, we want to extend our most sincere gratitude of appreciation for the twenty-five years of excellent service to the town of Clayton. We applaud you, and we wish you the very best in your retirement.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am Chief Greg Torver, the Clayton Police Department. I am here tonight to present Detective Malar with his gun and badge. As the mayor read, he has served with the town of Clayton for over twenty-five and a half years, and twenty-eight years as a law enforcement officer in this state. He is also a United States veteran. He served in the United States Army National Guard for over twenty years and retired at the rank of major. So Pat, on behalf of the town of Clayton and the Clayton Police Department, I'm going to read the inscription on this box which contained your gun and badge, says presented to Detective Patrick Malar with sincere gratitude for your years of honorable service to the Clayton Police Department and the town of Clayton, September the first, nineteen ninety-eight to May first, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you for all your contributions and service to the town and to the police department, and we wish you well in your retirement.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations.
He don't know what he just did. I had a song ready to sing tonight, but I'm not gonna do it. Now, I want to say thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to work for the town of Clayton for all these years. I have had some good times, and of course, we've all, you know, you go through ups and downs throughout your career, but it ended on up. I get to spend more time with my lovely wife now, and hopefully, I won't have to come back to work because I'm going crazy. But thank you very much, and have a great day.
Well, we thank you too very much for your service, and for all of those standing against the wall back there representing the Clayton Police Department, we thank you all for your service as well, and congratulations and best wishes to you, Detective Malar. And y'all can leave if you want to. You don't have to stay for the rezonance. It's perfectly okay. But now, if you want to stay, it's gonna be a great meeting.
We don't. But thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. Enjoy. Up next on our agenda is Johnston Community College presentation by Dr. Vern Lindquist, president of Johnston Community College, as well as Lynn Austin, Chair of the Board of Trustees for Johnston Community College.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Lindquist, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for the invitation, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm happy to be here. You will, I am Vern Lindquist, I am not Lynn Austin.
Correct.
As you've figured out. And what I'm here to do today is to give you an overview of the bond request that the college is making to the county commissioners, in hopes that it will be something that you can support and advocate for on our behalf. I met with them, I and members on my team this morning. We had some students with us as well, and I think the presentation went very well. If you missed it, it's on YouTube, I guess, or something like that. If you don't mind, I'd like the members of my team and my trustees to stand up, so you can see who I've got with me here. My chief academic officer is here, my chief information officer, my chief student officer, my chief academic officer. This is really the core, thank you very much, and Lynn and Hank from the Board of Trustees. We've got a great team at the college, and we're gonna be moving things forward very quickly, and very well with them at my back. So, after a fifteen-month study process, LS3P produced a very thick book with a facilities master plan for the campus, not just in Smithfield, but for all of our facilities. That includes what we've got going in Four Oaks, the Hall Woods Center, what we've got in Clayton already, and various other things that we need. They did two things. They did first, an analysis of our current needs and our current facilities, and then they also did a market analysis about where our students are going to be coming from in the future, and what kinds of programs they're going to need. And what they found, and which we can add to that from some state data that we get, was that we are in dire need of having a facility, we hope, close to the hospital in Clayton, for some reasons that I will try my best to make clear to you. First of all, as it stands right now, according to state data, Johnston Community College loses more than one thousand two hundred students per year to another college. That other college has campuses close to the border. They just opened a new one a little while ago. I was not able to make the groundbreaking, but it's close on our heels. They have plans to open another campus in White Oak, and I fear that the one thousand two hundred students we're losing now may just be the basement, and that number may go up as time goes on. Even with that, one thousand two hundred students per year adds up to about five million dollars per year in lost revenue to the college. This is money that would be recirculating many times in Johnston County if there were some way for us to keep this money in our borders. And we believe that the reason that the students leave Johnston County to go to Wake is not because they're offering programs that we don't offer. The vast majority of the students who are leaving are going for transfer programs and preparing for healthcare programs, things that we do. It's just, it's just convenience sake. That is, if the campus is closer and has better facilities, we're gonna continue to lose our students. So, that's something we knew from our own analysis of state data. And what LS3P showed us is that the main growth areas for the college are going to be healthcare-related. So, we could have known that simply probably by talking to Tom Williams, who tells me all the time that he needs more nurses, he needs more search tech folks. Basically, he needs more of everything. And we need to keep those workers in the county. We do know, and this is something which is true nationally, eighty percent of students will tend to want to live and work where they went to school. This is even more true for healthcare workers, because if you get your first clinical placement at a facility, you're very likely to take your first job there. So, it's really crucial for us to make sure that our healthcare programs have strong enrollments, and that they get clinical placements here. And so, having a facility near the hospital would be a great way for us to try to make that happen. So, what we've asked for is eighty-five million dollars. That would allow us to build a facility which is somewhat smaller than LS3P recommends, but still, we believe, big enough to serve the bulk of our needs for the foreseeable future. That facility, which we hope to have located, as I said, near the hospital, would contain within it a virtual hospital, so a teaching facility with the ability to be used not only by all of our healthcare programs, but also by the hospital facility itself, when they need to do continuing education and various other things. It's something that I know the county has wanted for a very long time, and this would be a great way for us to get that. It would also include science labs and other classroom facilities. It would be a standalone campus. And having a location in Clayton, near the hospital, would be a good way for us to stanch the flow of students going the wrong way on that road, and get them to stay with us here. We do know that even as things stand, healthcare workers are in especially short supply. It's gonna be getting worse as things go on, and frankly, I'm space limited on the main campus in Smithfield. There's only so many more programs I will be able to start, given how much space we have. We do plan to start respiratory care as soon as we can, we're in the planning stages of that. We hope to start surgical technology as well, and we're in the pleasing stages for that program. I'm not really sure where I'm gonna put them at this point. I'm gonna find a place, if I have to empty my own office out, we will have those programs. But that's gonna be it. And so, other programs that LS3P has identified as potential growth areas for us, and needs, real needs, in the county are going to go unmet unless we're able to get the facility that we need. We'll also, by the way, if we get this facility, we can empty out some buildings on campus, which will allow us to increase other things that we're doing. We also know that we have great needs in public safety, we're very space limited there as well. If I can empty out some space on campus, I can give them the space that they really need, without needing to do as much new construction as we might need. So, it would be a very cost-effective way to do that. And, you know, obviously, we all know that we need our EMS folks, we need our fire, we need the B O E D folks, and we need to give them the facilities they need to do a good job for us. Finally, our college's enrollment is, as I hope you've seen in the newspaper, at historic highs. Double-digit increases in enrollment this fall were frankly, a little unanticipated. I knew that our enrollment would go up, I did not know it would go up this much. The enrollment seems to be increasing at a rate faster than was predicted by our models on campus and by LS3P. That means that frankly, if we started building this facility today, we would still be behind the eight ball. We are really, really, really in desperate need of more space, and we really need to make sure that we get more space here, so that we can best fulfill our mission for the employees, potential employees, sorry, the employers, and the students of Johnston County. So, I thank you very much for your attention, and if you've got any questions, I would be happy to address them.
Questions or comments?
I don't have a question, just a comment. It certainly seems to be a logical solution to a problem of students going, like you said, the wrong way. And a campus here makes perfect sense, so kudos to you for getting all that together and getting the statistics together. Great presentation.
Thank you very much.
So, my question is, what can people who are here this evening with us, and those watching through social media, what is it they can do to help support this?
I think the county commissioners need to hear how much support there is, not just for this particular project, but for the programs and the students that this project will serve. We can't complain that it takes us too long to get in through the emergency room, if we're in the position to help make that emergency room work, and we don't take those actions. So, people can contact the county commissioners and let them know how important the education of our students is, how important it is for us to keep the tuition dollars here, to keep the employees here, because, you know, the unemployment rate in this county is very, very low. The competition for anyone to do anything is incredibly high. If we do anything to send potential employees out of the county, we're going to make it hard for every potential employer who might wish to move to this county going forward, and that's not a message I think we want to send.
Right. You know, I will brag and say that we have all collectively done an amazing job in creating a workforce development concept and program for Johnston County, and those have really been targeted towards supporting our biopharmaceutical industries that are here. But, you know, we're privileged and fortunate enough to have a hospital. But, you know, we're privileged and fortunate enough to have a hospital located here that, you know, funding and so forth, and the pathways for expansion, additional beds, all of that is coming down the pipeline. And what a better way to increase the workforce development for a hospital and for healthcare services than to have an entity in western Johnston County that could help educate and support that. And I think it's hugely important, really, not only for the overall economic development of the town of Clayton, but really what it can do for the entire Johnston County. So, for that, I will certainly encourage all of our residents and citizens to contact your county commissioners and to let them know what kind of value this brings to our county and how it supports people who are trying to continue their education, and particularly those in the healthcare services. It's extremely important to understand that we have a $5 million loss annually for the community college for people who are going someplace that is more convenient. Let's face it, we all live in a world where we choose convenience, we choose convenience every day, but we also are here to run a business and be good stewards of the tax dollars. And when we see that an $85 million investment and what it can yield for Johnston County over the next 10 and 20 years is phenomenal. So, I will definitely be doing my part, and we will encourage all of our citizens and everyone watching through the social media to get in touch with those county commissioners and really let them know how important this is. You know, I understand, just like with the town of Clayton, we have so many big-ticket projects that we are in need of. You know, most currently for us is a $260 million water reclamation facility. It's not a wastewater treatment plant anymore when you're at $260 million. It's a reclamation facility. But nonetheless, you know, I understand that the county commissioners have a lot of big projects that need additional attention, but honestly, in today's world, you know, education has to come first, and workforce development and creation to continue economic development on the path that Johnston County is headed is tremendously important. So, I will do my part. I will encourage everyone to do their part to create that partnership where we can all benefit.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Porter.
Is it possible that we could do a resolution of support for this?
I would think so. Yeah.
So, and I'll defer to the attorney. If it's a resolution, it would probably have to go on the next meeting. The timeliness of that, I'm not sure when the county commissioners are taking that up. We could also, with consensus, we could draft a letter of support that I could send or I could put, or the mayor could sign, and similarly, send it to them in support of the ask from the community college, if that's a simpler path.
That would be quicker, and I would certainly be in favor of that.
Same here. Yes.
All right. We'll go ahead and draft something up, and myself or the mayor will go ahead and sign it and send it to the commissioners. Thanks.
Right. So, thank you all for being here this evening. And Pam Harrell, I'm like really excited to see you here. I had the opportunity to serve with Pam back in the day when I was the president of the Community College Foundation, and it's so great to see you. So, Ms. Austin, thank you for your leadership, and thank all of you for your leadership in what you do for Johnston County, but especially for our community college. Doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you. All right. Up next is the Southeast Area Study Update, Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Conrad Tomato, planning director, here to have Ms. Gabby Lawlor with the North of Campo, Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization do a presentation on the CEES update. We'll be hopefully answering some questions about the new update, and we're planning to bring forth the resolution for your support at the May 20th council meeting. So, without further ado, Ms. Gabby Lawlor.
Thank you, Conrad. So, as you mentioned, my name is Gabby Lawlor, and I'm here from the Capital Area MPO. So, quickly, what I will be going over this evening, I'll be providing a project refresher and update for any who might not be familiar with the study, and then just a quick overview of what is included in the CEES report, and an overview of methodology that was used to prioritize the projects coming out of this study. And then finally, just the logistics of working towards endorsement of the study. So, the CEES update, so it's an update to the existing Southeast Area Study that was completed in 2017, and the purpose of the study is to establish a unified vision for the integration of land use and transportation to accommodate existing and future travel needs, and it is done in coordination across the region, across jurisdictional boundaries. So, we started off the study working off of the guiding principles that were established in the 2017 CEES study, and then went out to the public, excuse me, to essentially confirm whether that's still consistent with what they would like to see going forward, and also checking in with the stakeholder oversight team and the core technical team, which were the guiding bodies that supported the projects, just to ensure that we were all on the same page, that these guiding principles were still accurate. So, project schedule, as you can see, we're currently wrapping up the overall study effort. We're going around these jurisdictions and providing presentations to obtain letters of support, and this will ultimately culminate in endorsement of the study recommendations by Campo's executive board. So, I'm going to walk through the contents of the report. I'm not going to read out each of those chapters, because we're going to go over them in the next few slides here. So, the introduction essentially sets up the context for the study, and it provides an update of what has occurred in CEES jurisdictions since 2017. As you're all very familiar, or very aware, this region is just exploding in growth. So, there was a lot to be accounted for, to set up the framework for the study, and then also just an acknowledgement of the communities and project partners involved. So, the planning framework is the process essentially that we followed to complete the study, an overview of outreach that went into it, both public and for stakeholders, and just an overview of the work that was completed by the guiding, technical, and stakeholder advisory groups. So, the regional snapshot provides an overview of existing conditions and the future conditions as far as we can project going forward based on where we're at and what is laid out in CEES community plans. And so, this was the building block to help inform what infrastructure is needed to help support future conditions. So, in the land use and scenario planning, it's essentially taking a look at land use and growth strategies, and we had a series of what-if scenarios, taking a look at how development and redevelopment might occur, and we went through these scenarios with the technical stakeholder groups. So, the multimodal recommendations, this walks through how the recommendations were developed using an equitable planning analysis to develop recommendations for roadway, for bicycle, pedestrian, transit, and freight. In the action plan, this is essentially like the meat of the report. This lays out the recommendations coming out of the study and essentially how they're prioritized and how they're laid out into different horizon years for when we think they might either, one, reasonably be completed, or when they might need to be completed So, I did want to call out a couple of other resources that are in the appendices of the report. The first one is a hotspot that was completed for Clayton at the US-70 NC-42 and Ranch Road intersection. And so, this, the hotspot analysis took into consideration that there are improvements that are laid out across several phases. So, the first one is currently under construction, and that's the Ranch Road extension, which is also referenced as tip number U-6223. And so, that'll provide a direct connection between NC-42 and the US-70 bypass, as well as a realignment of Bowling Street and Little Creek Church Road. The second phase is laid out for the second decade in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is Campo's guiding document for transportation improvements to be completed within Campo's region. And so, the second phase would involve widening Ranch Road from two to four lanes and would officially reroute NC-42 along Ranch Road. The third phase is what this hotspot analysis was mostly concerned with, and that's an improvement that would be targeted for the third decade of the MTP. And so, that would be an interchange in rail grade separation at US-70 Business and NC-42 East. And the objective with this was to look at potential interchange configurations to ultimately grade separate, provide a grade separation over the railroad or under, whatever way it works, but also to identify probable impacts to the surroundings. Since the area is growing quickly, often with these planning efforts, we just try to take a look at what would the potential configuration with a significant improvement like this be to hopefully help reserve right-of-way and limit the impacts when the improvement is eventually funded and goes into construction. And the second thing that I wanted to point out in the appendices, there were hotspot toolkits that were also developed with the study, and these were meant to be resources for CEES community planning staff and ultimately with the goal of, with the hope of helping to advance the goals and the guiding principles that were established in the study. The first toolkit was an intersection control evaluation resource, which with a specific emphasis on multimodal considerations, meaning bicycle and pedestrian, which are often not at the forefront when intersections are being designed or improved. And so, there's a pamphlet and a booklet resource that are available, and there is also a video which just provides an overview of the benefits of compact development, and again, in an attempt to drive home those goals of the study. So, moving on to project prioritization, the prioritization takes a series of inputs to identify project priorities that can be sorted into general time horizons, ranging from near to mid to long-term, near-term being five to 10 years, midterm being 10 to 20, and then long-term 30 and further out. So, taking a look at the bicycle and pedestrian recommendations, near-term recommendations were mostly those that were meant to fill in gaps in the network, particularly within towns. Midterm looked at recommendations intended to connect towns and recreational resources, and long-term was for those that were intended to complete the regional multimodal system. So, for transit recommendations, near-term were those that would provide key, high-demand regional connections, and mid to long-term was mostly in areas where there's not necessarily the market yet to support transit, but we anticipate that in the near future, there would be. For roadway recommendations, these were, near-term recommendations were those that were determined that are more needed, more critical in the immediate term for capacity, and ranging all the way to visionary, which was projects that are not needed anywhere in the near-term, but as we continue to grow and expand down the road, 20, 30 years out, will likely be needed. And intersection improvements were also sorted based on that same criteria, which is mainly travel time savings. So, moving on to endorsement, as I mentioned earlier, we're currently working towards endorsement from all Campo member jurisdictions that are included in the CEES study area. So, you know, right now, I'm going around and presenting to various town councils and planning boards, and like I mentioned, ultimately, we will take this to Campo's executive board, but I also wanted to note that we are aware that Clayton is updating its transportation plan, and I just wanted to point out that any recommendations that do come out of that transportation plan update would either supersede or add to the recommendations that are coming out of this. So, if there's any concern of, wait a minute, this study already wrapped up, and we're just now going through our transportation plan update, that shouldn't be a concern. Those recommendations will still filter up to the MTP, which Campo is in the process of updating and developing its 2055 MTP. And so, finally, I just wanted to point out that the final report and other supporting documentation can be accessed at Campo's website under the Area Studies tab. Public comment period is ongoing. It started in April and will wrap up, will wrap up right before the executive board meeting in June, and my contact information is there if anybody has any questions. I'm also happy to take any questions that you might have right now. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Awesome. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Thank you, Gabby. I serve on the Campo Board for Clayton, and we appreciate the thoroughness of this and the level of detail and a lot of consideration of Clayton. We do have some comments that we're going to definitely submit in the near future, but thank you for coming tonight, presenting, and we see this as very valuable, help with us as a roadmap for the future for Clayton. Thank you.
And we appreciate the partnership.
Absolutely. Likewise.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Up next on the agenda is the Elected Officials' Day proclamation. Give the floor to Heidi Holland, Town Clerk.
Town of Clayton Elected Officials' Day proclamation. Whereas elected officials include city council members, mayors, governors, members of state legislatures, senators, representatives in the United States Congress, and even the President of the United States. And whereas they have occupied powerful positions in the government because they have been voted in, and whereas our elected officials work to enhance the quality of life in the town of Clayton by listening to and valuing the needs of all citizens, and whereas it is on this day we recognize our elected officials of the town of Clayton, Mayor Jody McLeod, Mayor Pro Tem Michael Sims, Councilmember Ruth Anderson, Councilmember Andrea Archer, Councilmember Porter Casey, and Councilmember Gretchen Williams. Now therefore, the town of Clayton hereby proclaims May 19th, 2024, as Elected Officials' Day in the town of Clayton, and citizens are encouraged to express your appreciation to these officials. Proclaim this the sixth day of May 2024.
Awesome. And up next is the...
Oh, we're going to get a picture.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. All of us?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, let's get a picture then.
I think we can do it right here.
All right, thank you. All right, up next is Economic Development Week proclamation. I'll give the floor to Councilmember Casey.
May I have the Economic Development Department come up, please? Town of Clayton Economic Development Week proclamation. Whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, colleges, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas economic developers engage in a wide variety of activities to facilitate the growth and well-being of their communities, working across jurisdictions, departments, and disciplines. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, nurture their downtowns and neighborhoods, and improve the quality of life in their towns and their regions. And whereas the town of Clayton first established its economic development department in 2018. Now therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton Council, we hereby proclaim the week of May sixth through May tenth, 2024 as Economic Development Week, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better.
And up next is the National Police Week proclamation that you've all been waiting for.
Alrighty. Town of Clayton National Police Week proclamation. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including dedicated members of the Clayton Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen ninety-one, more than 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including Patrol Officer Charles Lee, Patrol Officer Ray Gilmore, and Lieutenant Monica Carey, who honorably served as members of the Clayton Police Department. And whereas the names of these dedicated police servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes have been added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 137 officers killed in 2023. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund thirty-six candlelight vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, 2024. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton Council, we observe May twelfth through eighteenth, 2024 as National Police Week, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in community and communities across the nation. Proclamation this sixth day of May, 2024. Sign, Joe, Mayor Jody McLeod.
Thank you, gentlemen. We got the best law enforcement in the state of North Carolina, right here in Clayton. Not a day goes by where we're not appreciative for the job they do. It's been a while since I've had a speeding ticket or failure to come to a complete stop. And we no longer ask if you are radar certified, so. And the last proclamation for this evening is the Tourette Syndrome Awareness Month proclamation, and I will give the floor to Councilman, Councilmember Archer.
Town of Clayton proclamation, Tourette Syndrome. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is an inherited neurological disorder that is characterized by involuntary physical and vocal tics that occur many times a day. And whereas Tourette Syndrome is often accompanied by other mental health disorders such as attention deficit and obsessive compulsive disorder, learning disabilities, and anxiety. And whereas Tourette Syndrome and tic disorders affect 1 in 50 children, more than 45,880 school-aged children in the state of North Carolina alone are dealing with Tourette Syndrome. And although some of these cases are aided by medication, there is no standard treatment or known cure for the disorder. And whereas there is an important need for more professional help with interest and expertise to identify, counsel, and treat people with Tourette Syndrome, a disorder that is often misdiagnosed and misunderstood. And whereas positive actions to assist children and families living with Tourette Syndrome would result from a broadening of public and professional knowledge and acceptance of Tourette Syndrome. And whereas the Tourette Association of America is actively providing services to families, educating medical professionals and teachers, and supporting research to better understand the signs and treatments of TS. Now therefore, be it resolved that May fifteenth through June fifteenth, 2024, will be recognized as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Month in the town of Clayton as a special day to promote understanding, compassion, and acceptance for all of our fellow citizens who deserve and need our support to break the stigma that surrounds Tourette Syndrome. Proclaim the sixth day of May, 2024.
Thank you, ma'am. We don't have anyone to present that to tonight, but we'll get to the appropriate parties. Thank you so much. All right, up next, under public hearing, is the 2024-24 CZM Shotwell Apartments, and I will give the floor over to the Planning Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Conrad Almedo, Planning Director. This is the Shotwell Apartments, 2024-24 CZM, conditional zoning with a master plan. This is a request that was presented, presented at the planning board at their April twenty-second meeting. There's been a couple of changes, modifications presented by the applicants that are noted in, in yellow highlight. You'll see this in our presentation, so just to be aware of some slight modifications. So the original request was to have 96 units, and they've dropped out down to 90 units right now. The property size is 2.91 acres and a density of about 31 units per acre still. This use does require conditional rezoning, so it's conditional zoning residential. The rough location is off of Shotwell Drive to the east. I'm going down, I want to say that's Cameron, and Enterprise is where the townhome community is, but before that is Mechanical. This is where the new Ziggy's, Ziggy's coffee shop is on that corner right there. And further south would be the seventy. This is a, a master plan, a site plan, but it's really a master plan. It's not intended to be as detailed as a site plan that will forth, will be forthcoming for a technical review committee review at that time. But you can see the slight modifications of the table there showing the 90 units. This includes three parcels on north side of Mechanical Drive and one parcel to the south, so there will be some off-site but connected parking. This structure will have a ground floor leveled enclosed parking, so this is a floor plan that, that does illustrate that with some of the apartment, with some of the amenities that will be there. And then the second story, the stories that are above it, this is an example of a floor plan that will look, that will be on the building. In terms of zoning, the existing zoning is CRM, and it will be changed to CZR. You can see the surrounding district. The surrounding districts there are also CRM to the south, some, the townhome community to the east, mixed use to the north, and then some industrial to the west, and also for the commercial. The future land use map has this classified as high-density residential. It is adjacent to the downtown support future land use map that's directly to the north. This is a quick excerpt of the future land use map. And you can note the density there, so staff would be amending our future land use map so that the zoning, the future zoning density would become consistent with what would be the downtown support. These are examples of the building elevations that are being proposed for the project. And the applicants are here, and they can further articulate the information I'm providing to you as well, in terms of balconies or other onsite features. The planning board had a request to provide some examples of what it might look, some renderings. So this is provided by the applicant to give you an example of a cross-section from the townhome community to the east, the building, the landscape buffer, just to provide some This is an example of some of the materials that will be used for the project. Some of the base development standards will be applicable, including those for stolen water, landscaping buffers, open space amenities as well. Here's an example of some of the, the traffic generation that was, that was provided. To note, did not trigger a traffic impact analysis. The thresholds are below that. These are the conditions that are approved, were being recommended and signed by the applicant. I'm gonna go ahead and scroll through these and focus on those that have changed. This is included in your packet as well. See if I have those here. These are the changes that have been provided since the planning board meeting. You note the reciprocal parking agreement, parking and off-street parking was a significant discussion at the board meeting. There was a discussion about the visitor parking, guest parking on the site, some funding for signage, a six-foot privacy fence to be installed. Some pros, some recommended prohibitions of parking as well, and some other road improvements The project does meet the, the criteria in the UDO, and staff did, is recommending approval. As inconsistent with the future land use map, the planning board did recommend denial of the project at their meeting. And now staff did print out a, a copy of the recommendations of the different options for, for council to consider. The applicant's available to do their presentation, but staff is available also right now to answer any questions council may have.
Can you give me your definition, or the definition, or the interpretation of good faith effort?
Good faith effort? I think good faith effort is going a little bit above, beyond the minimum requirements for public noticing, having a neighborhood meeting, engaging applicants, engaging the community. So a good example, recent project, the Carolina Overlook, those applicants, they had some folks reaching out to the, to the neighbors, the community there, working with staff. So in this project, we've been working with them. The timeline has been rather quick. This is, the applicants will be able to articulate, it's a low-income affordable housing product. They have an obligation to submit an application to the state by May tenth. So they've been working with staff to really work together on a quick timeline to get their application submitted. They do need zoning approval before their application can be considered.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually noted the same language. It mentions good faith effort in condition number thirty-two, and it is regarding, it's totally slipped my mind now. I think it has something to do with arranging parking, possible parking agreements with adjacent property owners. And I know that was discussed at the planning board as well. Is it number thirty-two? Yeah. A good faith effort, and so I don't know if it's a question for you to answer or for them, but likewise, I was kind of curious how a good faith effort could be demonstrated, just so we have some, something to look, look at in the future.
Yeah, to articulate, a good faith effort does not mean fulfillment or appointment of a signed contract. We don't have that at this time. I was thinking more of a general, so apologize if my, if my answer was vague.
Yeah, so I was kind of curious if we could spell out maybe as, if needed, or if this council wanted to, something like email documentation that they attempted, or documentation of phone calls, or maybe who they spoke with, that sort of thing. I fully expect that they're gonna attempt to do it. I just wanted to make sure that there was some, some way to document that if possible.
Correct. For instance, if there was discussion about this, if the neighbors were absolutely unwilling to have that agreement in place, it would be a demonstration to staff or, you know, that they were emailing, they were trying to have that agreement to have a successful outcome. Yeah, it's a good point.
Mr. Casey?
Yeah, a couple of questions to Andrea's, Councilwoman's Andrea's point. A good faith effort is obviously encouraged, but I mean, I assume there's some sort of contractual agreements with the other adjacent property owners, and there may be some sort of financial incentive and such too. So it's really hard to capture a good faith effort when there's so many different nuances about it. That's just a comment, not really an action item, but as we think about this, as we're hearing this, if there's anything, or the developer has any ideas, I'd love to hear them. So, so for me, the questions I have, first off is, you know, based on the current zoning in this area as is, without getting rings on, what is, what is applicable, what is potentially capable going there versus this project? So, you know, we know as council, but also the, the, the community knows as well.
So this, the property is currently zoned CRM, so that would allow commercial uses. The, the height of the structure was brought up at the planning board also. This whole district allows up to a 60-foot high, high building to be a commercial product. So it's roughly comparable to what is being proposed right now. There, there is a, a, the UDO provides a buffer or a distance of a structure of this height from a single-family detached property, property of the single-family detached home. The adjacent properties are not single-family detached, they're considered single-family attached. So in that kind of technicality, you could either have a commercial building, or in this case, an apartment multifamily building relatively on that height without that kind of distancing requirement or that buffering. I want to say the cross-section did account for some of that. Relatively on that height without that kind of distancing requirement or that buffering. I want to say the cross section did account for some of that. Um. Let me see there. Might be going off tangent here a little bit, but. So you can kind of see this, um, on that top image right there. You see how they've stepped the building back a little bit. Um, I'm hoping applicants can articulate that. That's to reduce the. The, um, I guess the obviously the building's height as he as it gets close as it's adjacent to the single family attached product there. Um, so. There are other commercial uses. Uh, the principal use table would allow uses in their CRM, but I'd have to look at the U D O to articulate exactly what uses would be allowed there. But the the zoning came up in the context of height and.
Okay, perfect. So conceivably, there could be more intense or less intense uses here otherwise. How would you characterize that?
I think that the intensity of the project. Currently would be possibly a a single story kind of commercial use. Or um, maybe like a light industrial kind of office plex possibly similar to what you also what we also see along seventy. Hours to use my crystal ball. Um, it's.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And so the other thing I you in your presentation, I'm sure the applicant is going to speak about this too. You showed some of the, I guess, materials being used. Um. I don't necessarily see that on list as a condition. However. I know this is under the new U D O and I guess we have the U D O six point two point four D ten. Is that, so they're kind of going under this new D O on the design qualities and characteristics that we're. Um, looking to see, I guess, is that safe to say, fair to say?
Let's see if I can do it. I think that the the exceptions might be the metal paneling. In terms of the materials, so the U D O, there are some prohibited materials, but sometimes there's metal paneling and there is a caveat about materials and when to use, when a metal panel would be appropriate. But um, I think the applicants might be able to articulate a little bit a bit better about that.
Right.
Um, this would be an opportunity to have that discussion about what would be. Um, desired in terms of.
Okay, I appreciate it. I looked at that in the U D O and it definitely seemed like it was kind of meets the. The expectations of of council typically. So I I I just didn't see specifically, other than just addressing that one U D O section. Um, in in this, in in the conditions. Um, and that I think that was condition number fourteen in the conditions. Um, I think the last question I have right now is. You know, really, one of my, one of my, you know, concerns are 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 flags with this. Whole area right now is honestly that shotwell road. Um, intersection, that shotwell road itself, the shotwell road at Cameron Way. So I understand that the D O T is giving funds and we're supporting the D O T in. Regards to some improvements of that shotwell road intersection and so 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 forth. Can you, you have any, can you elaborate on that? Do you have any information on that?
So staff did look at the N C D O T's um, STIP map and currently. I did not see, we did not see any improvements later for shotwell drive, but engineering director Joshua Baird might have some comments.
Good evening, Joshua Baird, Engineering Director. Yes, so there are improvements that are planned. At the shotwell and US seventy business intersection. Uh, those have been in design for quite a while. There were some funding issues. Uh, it's town has worked with D O T to submit that as a lap project and receive. Uh, lap funding for that and that project, uh, using those federal dollars is moving forward. That is at the. Intersection of shotwell and US seventy business. I don't recall the exact stints of that in terms of number of turn lanes. Uh, and all that are included with that, but there is some improvements, uh, originally planned to be bid in April. I think it had pushed back to maybe June or so. Uh, but that's just at the US seventy business intersection.
But that obviously those improvements should help the traffic flow in that general area because that that area is 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 pretty intense right now as it is.
Uh, it will improve to some extent, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do not believe I have any more questions at this time.
All right, Mr. Sims.
What's the, what's the date of those? Do you have a date on that you said?
Originally, D O T is managing that project. Uh, we're not managing that that year. Originally, we were told April, the latest I think I heard was coming up June, July sometime when that project will be let.
What, uh, remind me, I apologize, I forgot. Well, what triggers, uh, what's the unit? What's the number that triggers for traffic analysis?
Let me take a look here.
Councilmember Sims, it's a, it's a hundred peak hours. Uh, a hundred trips per peak hour or a thousand trips per day triggers the T I A.
It's not. Okay, so it wasn't, it's not the amount of of units or homes or.
The they use the Institute of Transport, Transport Traffic and Transportation Engineers use it a methodology based on the use, so that land use right there. And so they're using. That land use as a model to create the methodology. And so that's where they're going. Okay, that's where you get the four hundred thirty two daily trips. And you're having the thirty two A M and P M. And I want to say that this might be something that. Like the the consultants are here, but I wonder if that has something to do with the the type of. Housing that they're looking to do. And I like, I think it's an affordable housing or if it's a fifty five plus. Type of community. So you might have some reductions in the anticipated, but I would defer to the applicant to articulate. The any any traffic counts that they might have.
Yeah, I struggle with this part. Waiting here for an applicant.
All right, any more questions for staff? Yes.
Just while we're on that topic of traffic, do we have any estimates for when the ranch road extension opens? Just even loosely. No worries if not.
The latest update that I received, it was on schedule and I'm trying to recall how long the project duration was. I don't recall the exact timeframe. I um, I can see if I've got an update.
That's okay. The the reason I asked.
This is Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. I believe the contractor has until I will say summer of twenty twenty five, so roughly a year to complete that project.
Great. So my my follow up point was going to be, I believe, when we previously discussed that project. It had mentioned that it would alleviate a certain percentage of traffic at peak hours on business seventy. So I don't know if that, if we have those kind of numbers or that sort of thing, but it was kind of in the back of my mind for this project as close as it is to that intersection. And knowing that in the next year or so, ranch road extension will open up and will take some traffic out of that intersection. Um, if there's a way to, if you, if you remember hearing that, I don't know if any of us, if I imagined it, but um, if there's any, if there's any. Uh, backup to that that you think of during the course of this hearing, that would be great. Feel free to chime in. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir. We'll now give the floor to the applicant.
There you go. I'll figure it out. Uh, council members, thank you for having me. My name is Paul Keenan. I am the Vice President of Development for Reuter Walton Development. We are a twin city space developer. Um, I thought I would just do a brief introduction of the company, uh, and the project. And then spend most of the time focusing on the changes that we've made to the project based on the feedback we receive from the community. And then I'd also just like to highlight the specific rent and income restrictions for this project. Um, just to give some context on on the the operations of the building. And so, um, Reuter Walton is a, we began as a luxury home builder in the nineteen seventies. Um, in the early two thousands, my boss Nick Walton bought the company and started investing in single family homes. Uh, and rentals around the University of Minnesota. And over time, projects became bigger and bigger. Um, to the point where he was doing some more complex projects. Um, in the last ten years, we've done forty five ground up developments, uh, seven hundred and fifty million of development and have developed. Uh, over two point two million dollar, uh, million square feet, mostly in and around the twin cities. Uh, but this type of project is sort of right up our alley. Most of our projects are in that three to six story range of wood frame construction. Uh, these are some, these are all workforce housing projects that we've done in the twin cities to give you a sense of finish level. Kind of the exterior design, um, and the units themselves. Um, we do have a number of amenities we include in all of our buildings, such as a fitness room. Um, and community room for residents to use at free of charge. Um, just some nice elegant spaces that we are very intentional in in designing and take a lot of pride in the um, in the product we create. This is a rendering, um, of the of the shotwell apartments of the specific building we plan to develop on the site. So you can kind of see the exterior materials, um, that we're proposing. Uh, as Conrad showed, this is our updated site plan. Um. I did want to highlight, uh, and we'll get to it in the conditions. I also have those listed here. Um, we have made contact with the daycare owner, um. It's owned by a real estate investment company. Um, and so. They are kind of checking with their tenant, the daycare, to see if, uh, there's an opportunity for us. To either leave some spaces or come into a shared parking arrangement with them on that site. Um, so when you hear good faith effort, that was, that was our language that we proposed because we just didn't know if we'd be able to. First, find the owner, come to an agreement, um, between the board meeting and this, in this, uh, council meeting. So. I assure you, we're, um, on top of it, working hard, try to get something in place with those guys. I think Conrad did a good job of highlighting the updated conditions. Um, mostly centered around parking, uh, onsite and signage. Um. And then also, a big part of our updated site plan is to redesign, do some improvements on the existing cul-de-sac. Which will result, we think, in, uh. A lot more parking onsite for our pro, for our property, but it will also help mitigate some of the, um. On street parking that's happening in the neighborhood. So the first thing we did was reduce the unit count from, uh, ninety six to ninety units as as Conrad highlighted. Um, and we're very intentional in where we took those units from. Um, and so on our top story, we took off six units on. On the facade facing the townhomes. Um, and that was for several reasons. One is it just reduces the intensity of that facade that's right next to, right next to the neighbors. Uh, also it maintains our footprint. If we would have shrunk the footprint to reduce units, we would have lost parking along with it. So this allowed us to sort of maintain our current levels of parking, then increase with the redesign of the cul-de-sac while also, um, reducing units. And you can kind of see the, um, elevations of that step down. This, we wanted to highlight to show sort of the, one, the distance between, um, our building and, uh, the nearest townhomes, which is about sixty four feet. Uh, but also then give a, um, depiction of the grade change that's happening, um, on the site. So you can see that the townhomes actually do sit up quite a bit from an elevation, uh, from our building. Um, and we've got a nice line of mature trees that serve as a buffer that we fully intend to keep. We did kind of stretch as far as we can and we moved the building, um, six feet further west away from the townhomes. Um, so I think we have about twenty five feet from the property line to our building. Um, I think the, the existing code, my understanding of the the existing code is that. An allowable use would be a sixty foot office building within ten feet of the property line. Um, and so that is, in my, in my opinion, a much more intense use potentially that that would be allowed versus, um, our project. We are sensitive to the fact that this is a larger use than anything, uh, in the neighborhood. And so we've, um. Done what we can to try to mitigate, um, mitigate the intensity of the building for our neighbors. We've also added the privacy fence and, um. You can barely see it here, the six foot privacy fence. Uh, that is mostly to separate, um, pedestrians. Pets, things of that nature from the two buildings. It's not going to do a whole lot, um, in terms of blocking. Um, visuals from one project to the next. Um, but it will add, it will add. We're trying to prevent people from parking on enterprise and then walking through to get to our building. So we have, um. Worked to increase the parking on our project in a couple of different ways. One, just by reducing the unit count. Our, um, underlying parking requirement goes from a hundred and thirty five parking stalls to a hundred and twenty eight. Second, the, um, redesign of the cul-de-sac allows us to pick up, I think it's seventeen additional stalls. Um, and so that greatly increases the parking ratio that we are able to provide on the site. And so our original ninety six unit concept had. A total parking requirement of a one thirty five and that's what we provided. We provided the bare minimum. Um, based on the feedback we received at the, uh, planning meeting, we went back and were able to. Um, increase that parking ratio from one point four one to one point six nine. So we're now providing hundred and fifty two stalls. Um, for the ninety apartments or over the hundred and twenty eight required. And you can see this, um, kind of shows, this is designed intentionally for a hammerhead. This, this design will allow emergency vehicles to get in and out of our parking lot. Um, so we were paying careful attention to how we designed that for emergency vehicle access. Uh, moving on to the rent and income limits. So this is an affordable housing project, um. But it, the rent itself is not subsidized by the government. Um, and so I'll hit on the second table first. And so we will have income restrictions at the property and that's based on household size. So a family of four will need to make less than seventy three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. And then if they wanted to rent a two bedroom unit, I've got our underwritten rents up top, which is fourteen hundred and forty five dollars. That family will have to pay that rent. They'll have to show income, um. Of at least two and a half times that amount and show that they can make the that monthly payment. There is no further rent subsidy. Um. So I wanted to highlight that. Additionally, we have our underwritten rents here, which are based on the twenty twenty three, um, tax credit maximums of twelve oh nine for a one bedroom, fourteen forty five for a two bedroom. And sixteen sixty two for a three bedroom. And then based on our market study that we've conducted, I've got the, um. Market rate rents and then the average rent discount per unit type. So. A two hundred dollar discount on one bedrooms compared to market, one eighty seven. On two bedrooms and and a huge amount, four hundred and eighty two dollars on a three bedroom unit compared to the market. Um, which is just a huge, uh, huge savings. And the intent of this program. Is to not provide cheap units for, um, families. It's to provide. A little bit of a discount off the market rate rent for working families so that they can stabilize their housing payment. Um, and and be able to, uh, deal with changes or variations in the rest of their monthly budget. This is our updated, um. Trip generation comparison. Kind of, I'm not sure if it's the exact same. Table that you just showed, but basically what this shows is a few uses. but basically what this shows is a few uses that are currently allowed under the zoning and then compared to our use. And this shows that our daily total traffic is less than, than the other four allowed uses. And during the AM and PM peak hours, our traffic counts are less. And so compared to a vacant field, we will have more traffic. But compared to other allowable uses at the site, this is actually a less intense use. And with that, I will, I'm available for any questions. We do have our design team and traffic engineer here as well.
All right. Thank you, sir, Mr. Casey.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks for the presentation. I do have a few questions. Bear with me. I may stop. May let somebody ask, ask some questions. I may come back to you for some more questions, so please don't be surprised. So first off, can you kind of explain the timeframe on this? Why are we in such a rush?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so we are applying to North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for funding for tax-exempt bonds and low-income housing tax credits. And their application deadline is this Friday, May 10th. And their requirement is that all applications need to have proper zoning in place. And so every state is different that we work in. North Carolina requires proper zoning. And so we've worked with staff and, and we'll acknowledge it's an accelerated schedule. But we've worked with staff on this, on this schedule that gets us to a meeting tonight in time for application on Friday. So we're not asking for approval of the site plan, at least I'm not. We're, we're willing to keep working with, with the town and, and staff on improvements to the site plan. We just need to have our zoning in place.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm sorry. Still going, still going. The adjoining buffer, you had mentioned keeping those mature trees, but I did not see that set as a condition. Are you willing to set that as a condition?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Can we make sure we don't forget that, capture that? The other question is, so you know, this, I look at this as being an affordable housing product. What is the screening requirements of the tenants that will be staying in this?
Yeah, so we, we obviously verify income, but we also do criminal credit and rental history background checks. And then we will hire a local third-party manager to help us manage this building. We've got eight projects similar to this in the Twin Cities. And, and our experience is that we, we do a good job on tenant selection through the background process. And then, and then the key really is to enforce the terms of the lease as it relates to property cleanliness, resident behavior, guest behavior, things of that nature. And so we, we take the management component of the building very seriously.
Okay, thank you. So there is a, but the clarification, there is a background check requirement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had is, I see in your packet, you, you mentioned balconies or patios for these, but I did not see that as a condition as well?
We are, yeah, we are required to have balconies on this.
Okay, so that, okay, so we can make that as a condition then? Or is that just part of the, that might be part of the UDO, I'm not sure, but?
I'm willing to make it a condition.
I think the question would be, would the balconies be for all the units on all sides of the building?
I'm, I'm not sure. I just, when I read the packet, it said something about balconies or patios. I interpreted it as being every unit, but I, I don't know. It made it seem, I interpreted like said as all, but?
Yeah, we're not fully designed yet, so we're willing to work with staff. I have no problem providing balconies.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had is, I had some concerns about the Shotwell Road, as I mentioned earlier to staff, and that Cameron Way. I know that for the people that live in that area already, it is very difficult during certain times of the day to make a left to get back on Highway 70. What is the feeling of the applicant to? I don't know if it requires some sort of traffic study or something, but I mean, there's going to be continued stress on that Shotwell-Cameron Way intersections. As, I really feel like there needs to be a signalized light there. And I, I don't know if I can speak for the others on council, but I, I mean, that's a rough intersection already. The, the Shotwell Road improvements are going to, of course, alleviate some of that, but they're not going to alleviate those people trying to get out of Cameron Way and go on to 70. So is there any thoughts on that? Is there any?
Well, I think we're on the same side of the table here is we, we'd prefer to have it signaled too. My, my experience is that, I'm not sure who operates Shotwell, whether it's DOT or?
DOT.
So they, they ultimately call the shots. And, and similar to how our, our building didn't trigger a formal traffic study, I'm not sure that it would trigger the need for a signal there. Obviously, we're with you, where we'd love to have it. So anything we can do with the Department of Transportation, we'll do.
So you'd be willing to make a condition if approved through the DOT or through a traffic study to help support a signalized light there?
Sure.
Okay.
I think you need some clear. I think you need some clarification on the terminology of support. Are you saying financially support, being able to erect a stoplight at that intersection? Or are you saying a letter of support that says, yeah, we would love to have this?
Preferably, I'd want to support.
Well, I want to clear for the record.
I know, I appreciate that.
I'm thinking, he's thinking, yeah, we'll be glad to send a letter, but I need to hear where's the money coming from because I already dealt with DOT. And you know, we have had developers who wish to put in development in Towne of Clayton that have done upwards to a million dollars of road improvement on NC DOT property to get their project moving forward. So I think that's the come from here is, are, are you all willing to put some money into, into road improvements for getting in and getting out of what you'd like to develop?
Yeah, I think we could, well, first we could pay for like the traffic study or the analysis. It's hard to say without knowing like what the design is there and what that improvement would cost. So it's hard for me to commit to, you know, a dollar amount standing up here, but we would definitely commit to paying for a traffic study and analysis of that intersection.
Well, I believe you're gonna probably have to do that anyway, right? When you bring back a, a plan of what you want to do, we're going to have to know what, what the traffic study says. You know, not that I believe everything a traffic study says, but just because it's a, it's a requirement. And, and it would be a requirement because, you know, the forefiling is a fact that you have to prove in the state of North Carolina to be approved is going to be around safety. I think that's my way of saying, I don't know if y'all, the expectation of this council will be y'all will provide a traffic study if, if this gets resold and if you submit a plan to build something. I'm sorry, Ms. Archer, I didn't mean to take up too much.
That was perfect. I was just going to add to that. I understand the difficulty here because it is a DOT decision ultimately and you're abiding by their thresholds for the study. But if you were willing to perform the traffic study and say that they were willing to allow a signal to go into that intersection, could you commit to at least paying for the design of that system, of that stoplight?
Of the signal? Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see.
The, could you go back to the parking?
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, with the increased parking spaces, where will most of those be allocated to? So like, are so many parking spaces allocated towards each unit?
Well, we don't, so we've got one level of, our first floor is actually garage parking. And so we will allocate those parking spots, those will be assigned to the units. Typically, what we've done on the rest is we've got, they're not, they're not specifically reserved, but they're, will be stickered. And so residents of our building will have like a sticker that they put so we know that they're, they belong to us. And then we'll have designated parking spaces that will be used for guests.
Okay, thank you. Could you go to the, the traffic? Table, yeah, comparison, trip generator, thank you. So Councilman Porter and Andrea actually hit some of the stuff that I want to talk about. But are you guys basic, this is my problem with these trip generation things, man. It is literally driving me crazy since I've been on this board because at the end of the day, you're basically saying that it's either no impact or little impact based upon this, correct?
What we're saying is that you, there's a zoning that's currently in, in place that allows certain uses. And compared to those uses, we're, we're less intense.
Right. And, and I guess every thing has come before me. I never hear anybody talk about or say at all, is there ever going to be any traffic increase? But yet still, I mean, the right time of the day, I can watch right there on Shotwell, all the way back to the Walmart now where it's backed up. And nobody is ever saying, it comes before me saying that, hey, yeah, it's going to be more traffic increase. Everybody just keeps coming in for, we're saying, oh, yeah, we don't, you know, you know, this doesn't generate enough or based upon our analysis, this isn't going to really cause a problem. But, you know, we got enough engineer guys in the room. I'm not a big-time engineer like you guys are, but I do know this, something's wrong with this process. Because at the end of the day, the traffic is still increasing. Also, woman Andrea pointed out about the Ranch Road project because I think she's correct, that there will be a significant decrease in that. I guess my concern is, we don't know what that, what that looks like yet. And I'll, 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 let me hear the rest of this out. Anybody else have any things? I'll make comments more on that later.
Well, I'll just say on that point, you know, we were told with the, with the connection from 42 over to what we currently call the bypass, like, we were told of the traffic moving east on Highway 70, 50% of that traffic turns left onto Highway 42 East, which still means that at the intersection of Shotwell Road and Highway 70, most of that volume is still coming through that intersection. However, if most people, once that's done, most people will start taking the bypass around to get to 42. I think what the information that we kind of need is how much traffic is actually turning from 42 East on to Shotwell? And how much traffic is turning left off of Shotwell onto 70? Like, I think we need the numbers on that part of this. And what's the impact with units? As it pertains to parking, I believe I wrote down, you said you guys started with 135 spaces?
Correct.
And now you're, and then you reduced six units? So now you're down to 128 spaces?
We, the requirement, the minimum requirement for the underlying zoning that we're requesting would require 128. We're providing 152.
Okay. And I'm sure the, you know, just for the calculation purposes on that, that is assuming that the majority of your tenants have two cars and then some will just have one. Like, how do you calculate, we're having 152, we're building 90 units?
Yeah, so we've got sort of the multipliers in that middle column that, that you all require. Our experience in this type of housing where we have income restrictions is that we don't see a lot of two-driver households. Because if you, if I just go back to, you know, let's say we have a two-person household, two roommates, and they have to make less than 58, 740 between them. It's likely they're not going to each have a car because if they can each afford a car, they're probably going to be over that income limit. So the, the types of households we see are really single income earners with minor children or older adults on a fixed income. And they're, they're just not going to, for whatever reason, take on a second car for the monthly, you know, financial burden it creates. And so in our, in our projects in the Twin Cities, we're closer to a 1.2, you know, even the 1.0 parking ratio. Here, we're at almost 1.7. And so we've, we've heard the feedback from the, the, at the planning meeting. And so we worked really hard to, to try to get our parking count up. We, we're pretty comfortable that we're adequately parked for residents and guests at 152. But we will also continue to try to work with the neighbors and, and provide a shared parking arrangement.
Is this, this First Company's project in the state of North Carolina?
It is. So we're working on this project and a site in Raleigh. And quick story behind that is our, our preferred designer in the Twin Cities, Cos Wilson, bought a local firm about a year ago called Watts Leaf. And so they were encouraging us and a couple of their other clients to come do some research on North Carolina. So that's how we ended up looking for sites in this region. And then one thing led to another and we were talking to Patrick and Conrad. And so that's how, that's why we're here.
Gotcha. Mr. Casey?
Mr. Keen, thank you. Sorry, we're really focusing on parking and, and traffic. I appreciate the concession earlier regarding the, the traffic study on Shotwell and a signalized light between Shotwell and Cameron and the design. But if that study proves that a stoplight, the DOT will allow a stoplight there, would y'all be willing to pay your proportional share of that based on the trip, trip counts that your site would generate?
I mean, I think so. If the other neighbors, you know, are also pitching in, we're not, we're going to pitch in too.
Understand, understand. Okay, so that we can make that as a condition?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good. Thanks. Thank you, Jim. A few more thoughts on this project and I, I do think that whole area, Cameron Way, and I'm not saying this is necessarily on the developer of this site, but you know, there's a lot of people that park there when they go to La Casino. There's a lot of people that park there when they go to the gym. I think at some point they need to make that maybe one side parking. So I don't know if that's a staff, could investigate that and see if that makes sense considering the continued growth and development around that area and the congestion it's caused. I did not see a crosswalk at Mechanical Drive in Cameron Way near where that Ziggy's was when I drove there yesterday. And I feel like there needs to be a crosswalk because you have that daycare there as well. If you have, this project comes to fruition, you're going to have those people walking further that way. And then I'd be interested whether it makes sense to put a full-way stop sign at the intersection of Cameron Way and Enterprise Drive so cars don't continue to rush down Cameron Way going past Enterprise Drive. So I don't, like, I don't know if we want to push that on the developer or staff, but I think those are things that we need to make note of as we consider this area, consider this project.
Yeah, I would, you, you dropped a few, three, three things there. So I think we need to follow up with three or four. So I may have to go back to the tape, you know, trying to write down as fast as I could. I'm not sure if they captured it or not, but all of those are on existing facilities of ours that I think we should go ahead and investigate that on our end to see if we go ahead and do those as part of our transportation improvements ourselves.
And, and lastly, one last thing, for me, that mechanical drive is essentially deadening into this apartment complex. I have no objection personally if there's parking along the street there. If that helps you and that helps that area because it's not going to be a thorough fare like Cameron Way already is. So that's just food for thought. Like I said, maybe no action, but just my thought on that. That helps you out or not?
I think, you know, as I, as I just mentioned, I think we're adequately parked. So we'd actually be supportive if, if the town wanted to make that no parking or no overnight parking, we would be fine with that.
Yeah, yeah. One thing to note too, I drove there Sunday and right now it's a quiet cul-de-sac. There were two transfer trucks that were parked there over, it looks like they were definitely parked there overnight because I drove there and checked on them another day this morning. And so, you know, that's kind of a little bit of a questionable area, maybe. I don't know. I think, you know, there needs to be some more eyes on that. I think, you know, there needs to be some more eyes on that. So thank you.
May I just get one point of clarification for the for the roadway? Sounds like you want to, are we eliminating the cul-de-sac or relocating it? The only question there I have, and I know we're looking at zoning at this point, but we're going to have to look at making sure there's an approved fire access turnaround configuration in there somewhere. It could be a T turnaround, but.
Yeah, we've tried to design a hammerhead into our parking lot that you can kind of see in that red outline. But I think this, you know, this is conceptual at this point, so it definitely will need further design.
Okay, I just engineering hat on, just wanted to make sure that we got that as a takeaway that at the site plan level, we've got to evaluate that.
Yes, Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To further build off of that point, is that something we could conditionalize in terms of, you know, working with dealing with the costs associated with the cul-de-sac, including design, construction of a new turnaround, plating easement? Would that all be necessary to conditionalize to make sure that 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 has followed through?
We've tried to address it in condition thirty one. But if you want to make that more specific, we're open to that. But yeah, we see that as our expense.
Okay, great. Then if if maybe we could just add costs associated with into that language. And I really appreciate the dialogue that we're having here. And there was one more thing I wanted to request. That is in condition number thirty, which you just mentioned regarding restricting parking on mechanical drive. I assume that you meant that you meant you were willing to take on the burden of the signage and or striping. Is that correct, the financial costs associated with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If that could also be clarified in that condition to to say, I guess the way I was thinking of it, support and reimburse the expenses for the town of Clayton restricting mechanical drive, something along those lines. Thank you.
My my last question is, who monitors or enforces the parking sticker in the parking areas?
Our management company.
So that's on site twenty four seven?
On site.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All right. Any other questions for?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This has been noted as a public hearing, so if there's anyone that wants to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record. And please speak into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Deja Stevens. I actually live at one twenty five Enterprise Drive. So right there on Cameron, you know, crossing in that, you know, cul-de-sac. So there's a couple of things that I think I want to first note that I'm very pro affordable housing. I don't think this is an affordable housing thing like anti that. I'm actually a Clayton native, so I grew up in this area. I moved away for college and then I came back. That's how much I love this area. And one of the reasons I actually bought my home there, right? So an early home buyer, first time graduate, really proud of the community that we're developing here. And I think something that I've noticed as we're beginning to move away from that rule and country living, right? I was here, but when that Shotwell intersection didn't have a traffic light, plenty of accidents, plenty of deaths, tragic things have happened there. I'm worried now that we're moving towards a different type of dangerous type of development, right? We're moving away from that rule, back roads type of thing. And now we're moving to more of an industrialized situation. That creates a lot of hectic, heavy load bearing on the community and the impact it has for our neighborhood. That being said, there's actually a, you know, bus stop that's right there at the bottom of Cameron. And the kids rush out, right? As I'm coming home, I have a big car and I'm like, oh, wow, they're running out, they're they're rushing out. We have that one crosswalk right there that they run up to and they go to Ziggy's and they run. So I think that's something that we need to be cognizant of. There was a mention of the, you know, the parking on Cameron Way. And I think that's something to really note, that creates a lot of blind spots. So something that that Shotwell intersection had, that blind spot, you couldn't see when you're returning, and that created a lot of problems. I think we're going to see the same thing right there. And we're actually going to see it at multiple points, right? So right there at Shotwell and Cameron Way, that's already a problem. I've seen people walk. It's not really walkable. So I think there was a mention of actually people not having cars, you know, for this development. They might have like one or, you know, not many. This isn't really a walkable location. We do have, you know, a restaurant, we do have Ziggy's, but the grocery store, you're going to have to walk across Highway seventy. To get to Bojangles, you're going to have to walk across Shotwell. Oh, and then people are going to turn out from that rubble, you know, parking lot. And you're going to have to try to navigate that situation. So I think as it sits right now, I don't think that and, you know, maybe, you know, using this terminology in good faith, that we are ready, right, to rezone this location. I'm not saying that never, I that I'm not saying, you know, anti this or that, but right now, the trajectory that we're moving and the quickness, I just don't think that we're ready. And I think we're going to create a lot of problems that I moved in this area, back into this area to avoid, right? I don't live in Raleigh for a reason. You know, I live in Clayton because I love Clayton. I love the community. We're going to have those same problems that we see in Raleigh. So I just think it's something that I would really encourage you all to think about. Two point nine acres in some parts of Clayton is actually someone's backyard. Privileged as that may seem, that's the truth. So I think we need to be considerate of the aggressiveness that we're using that land. And people are going to be living there. So if this was used for retail property, doors would shut, lights would go off, you know, business closed for at least some portion of the day and night. We're talking about people twenty four seven at some level in some capacity. So I think we just need to be really cognizant and aware of that. And I would really appreciate that if you if you did that. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hello, Council. Thank you for hearing us today. Just a couple of quick little research findings that I did in my little bit of time. I looked through three clean apartments complexes and found out what their units and their parking space average was. And between those three units, it averaged out to one point nine six spaces per unit. Now, while I respect that, you know, the Twin Cities might have, you know, less parking spaces, it's because there might be more public transportation available that we don't necessarily have here in Clayton. So I know lots of families and lots of couples, and I can't name a single one that has just one car. Most people need two cars if they have a family around here. So I think to meet that one point nine six spaces per unit, based on what they've given, they would need at least twenty five more spaces, based on my math. And in addition, if it's possible to pull up the first level parking spaces, if that's possible, thank you. I noticed. Yes, yes, thank you. I noticed some of these spaces here right by these yellow squares, which I assume are like amenities. Those parking spaces would be frankly looking like dead spots where cars wouldn't really be able to turn in and out of per se. If that's not the final layout, I just hope that those parking spaces aren't counted as possible parking spaces. Same with the other end of the L shape. You'd probably need at least a third of the length of a car to be able to turn and be able to pull the way out. So there's a couple of dead spots that I noticed right there. In addition, I also went out and spoke to the owner of Clayton Fitness and got his opinion on the additional parking and about what was happening. And needless to say, he also did not feel like he could share his parking spaces. And I also was able to speak to the director of the Nest daycare that is also over there and asked about it. And she had only mentioned that she had not really heard much aside from receiving a letter. While that might be something that needs to continue to be followed up on, I just have less faith, less good faith that some of these company businesses might be able to provide additional parking based on what I spoke to their owners about. And lastly, just to go back to something that Mayor McLeod said earlier, we live in a world where we choose convenience. And if this parking of this way in and out of this community becomes inconvenient, people aren't going to be parking where they're supposed to be parking. They're going to be parking where they're not supposed to be parking. And that can snowball, you know? And if we overestimate the amount of parking we need, and at worst, it's a mild inconvenience. But if we underestimate it, it can snowball into a major nuisance down the road. So I just wanted to share that and give a little bit of context. Thank you.
Will you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Jonathan Adams. I live at one five seven Enterprise Drive.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sierra. I'll make this short and sweet because my baby's crying. Just a few things, I do live in the neighborhood that is being affected. So just a few points that some of my neighbors have already pointed out. Couple of questions. I'm not sure if you all can respond. But I understand that you all have had various locations. But why did we choose this specific small area to be the place of choice? What was it about this area that made the determining factor? And were there other choices that you all had that were denied for certain reasons? But particularly, why was this location chosen? Because you are going to affect the neighborhood, Cameron Crossing, you are going to affect us as well as the daycare, as well as those kids in the neighborhood that I live in. Because my son does walk to the different, he walks to Ziggy's, he walks to Dunkin' Donuts with his friends. So that traffic is definitely going to affect us. I also didn't see anyone point out the entryways. And I think the young man was just up here, speaking of some of the parking areas and how if you turn out, is that supposed to be the entryways to the development? Other few quick things, the ten thousand dollars that is supposed to be donated, is it donated to just the city of Clayton? Or is that split amongst the community? I know you said that all is for signage. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of the breakdown of that. And as I think another gentleman said, signage doesn't always mean they're not going to park there. Sometimes for some people that means I'm going to park there just because someone said I could. The good faith term that you all use, I think I probably can speak to most of my neighbors. We don't have any faith in this really working out. And unfortunately, we hope that the zoning is denied because we are having issues as it is coming out of our neighborhood. And we have already spoke about the four way stop sign that we already need and the construction hasn't even started. But also be mindful that we do have new restaurants being built. And then we're going to have this new development. Do you see how it's going to affect our little neighborhood? And how much traffic is about to come down on us for our kids going to school, going to camp, us going to work, going to the daycare? It's really going to affect us as a whole. So I'm hoping everyone take this in consideration, how it's going to affect the small neighborhood. I don't think many people said anything about Cameron Crossing. It was more so about the daycare, even about the gym. But our neighborhood where we raise our kids, where we come out from work, is really going to be impacted a lot. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul McKenzie. I live at two one four Enterprise Drive. And, you know, Ms. Archer and Mr. Casey, you guys all did a really good job asking your questions. And I do believe the ranch road thing will take traffic off of seventy. But as you said, it was about a year out. And we all know in a year, there could be another thirty thousand people living in Johnson County, Clayton area. I see you shaking your head. You know it's coming. But I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. And I think we really need to think about the infrastructure of Shotwell Road before we start doing anything else. Like you said, it's intense over there. It is. It is intense to drive around there. I mean, my wife and I lived Cameron Crossing, took us fifteen minutes to get here today from Main Street all the way down to the new church that's right there before the railroad tracks was just complete stop. And then you look up, like you said, you're going to Walmart. Traffic's backed up from Shotwell Road all the way down to Walmart. The infrastructure of this is needs to be addressed first before parking before this, before that. We're not going to have a hun, what was it, ninety units? So average one hundred and eighty more people. It's just not going to work. I mean, that's just, it's just not going to work. And yes, the parking's an issue, you know, we brought it up last time, but like, the traffic is the issue. And I don't, this is me personally, I don't know. I mean, I'm not a smart guy or anything, but I don't think they'll be able to put a light there. I mean, you've got US seventy that's three hundred yards away. And put another light right there, then you're just cramming more traffic into a small amount of area. But thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Woods. I also live in Cameron Crossing. And I have a couple of things I want to say first before I get into the concerns that I have. The first one is that I was at the planning planning board meeting and I spoke there. And I want to just say that I appreciate the fact that I feel as if we were heard, both from the development side of things and also just from the town of Clayton. It feels nice to know that the things that we say are, you know, actually heard and things changed from there to here. So that's the first thing I want to say. The second thing I want to say is that I, when I initially heard that this was, you know, low income housing, I think there was a bias in my head that I had that told me that that wasn't necessarily a good thing. And that caused me to do a little bit of research on it. And I found out that, you know, and also with some of the reassurances that the developer offered about, you know, just showing us the money side of things. I just, I like the transparency there. And that just helped me kind of understand that it's not necessarily what my biases told me to begin with. So I am like supportive of the idea of, you know, everyone having a home that works for them and their budget. And I think that's important, and I'm glad that there are people who want to make that a reality for people. With that all being said, I I do have two sort of major concerns. But I also have some ideas that, I don't know, they might be crazy, but at least they're something that could help with them. So the first one, of course, is what everybody is saying about traffic. And I think it's disappointing that the traffic, you know, numbers that we're seeing are just showing trips for this particular, you know, building because that doesn't really show us the whole picture, as we all know. There's been a lot of growth off of Shotwell Road between multiple town home communities, single family home communities, commercial things. It's just a lot to take for one road to take. I actually looked at the NC dots trips per day on Shotwell. You can apparently look that information up. And it has over more than doubled, I believe, in right around about a ten year mark. So Shotwell Road has taken on a lot more trips, a lot more people. And there is some data out there for that. But anyway, my solution or my idea for that is, and I think the town of Clayton is talking about this, but connecting the streets, there are two other areas where you could get out of the Cameron Crossing neighborhood that, for an unknown reason to me, they were, the roads were never connected. So from Blakely Street to, I believe, Atkinson, which goes to Moore Street, would give at least some access to another intersection to take some of the stress away from that Shotwell seventy intersection. And also Enterprise Drive meets Summit Street, but there's a gate there. And that goes directly to Main Street. So if these roads were connected, there would at least be some like dispersion of people going in and out of this area that would allow both us to get downtown quicker. would allow both us to get downtown quicker, which would be nice, but also it would, you know, alleviate some of those traffic concerns, I think. And that might be something that Clayton has control over because it's not focused on Shotwell Road. So that's the first thing. The, the second concern that I have is really with the stature of this building. Five stories is very tall for the town of Clayton. I, as I was driving here, I looked around and I couldn't find a single other building anywhere that was five stories high. I worry that because of that, we will end up having this building be a focal point and I don't know if that's really what we want. I also think it kind of lends itself to seeming much more urban because of how tall it is. And also a little bit of the design, like just showing some of the pictures. But I think it's, you know, that also doesn't do great things for the people whose houses back up to that, which we talked a lot about in the, the planning meeting and they have done some wonderful things to kind of try to fix that problem. But, and this is sort of the crazier thing that I was going to suggest, but it would be wonderful if that parking was underground because then this building would only be four stories high. And that would be at least sort of on par with like the hotel that's in the area, some of the more industrial buildings, you know, off on the other side of Shotwell. It would just, and it looks like when the, I guess the grade or whatever it's called, the levels to the actual ground, then that would make them almost the same height as the townhomes. So maybe not a great solution, but it's a solution. But anyway, I think that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
That's awesome. Thank you. Anyone else?
First of all, thanks for allowing us to speak here today, Mayor McLeod and council members. My name is Robbie Badger. I'm also a resident of Cameron Crossing. I live at 145 Enterprise, to be specific. We don't have to pull it up on the PowerPoint, but there's a slide on the PowerPoint, I believe slide number 10, that showed the diagram of the apartments next to a model home in Cameron Crossing. That's pretty much me. And I, I point that out because I'm very directly impacted by this site that the builders are trying to propose on. My lot is actually right at the building site. I'm only about 10 steps onto that property, even with trees acting as one barrier. It's easily accessible for, for both sides. A barrier to me, even an additional barrier of any sort, is not really going to separate as effectively as one might think. And any signage that we've been talking about today, any signage that we put up throughout the neighborhood, that's not going to stop Shotwell residents. Once the apartments are up, it's going to be difficult to enforce anything. And I believe even one member on the board in April even made that remark. One quick thing I did want to mention about Enterprise Drive in particular is there are a few homes along that drive that have been in the process of converting to solar energy. I think a five-story building directly behind those homes, blocking additional sunlight starting at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, could be a challenge obtaining electricity without direct sunlight. So some residents with solar energy might be getting the short end of the stick there. There's also still that stigma with the term affordable housing. Even with the right marketing from the builder, I'm still concerned with insurance adjusters and appraisers capitalizing on the term low income. You know, when the apartments are on the map, insurance companies will see that we're now 300 feet from low income housing and the insurance just jacked up 35% maybe. Same thing goes for property resale, you know, except the opposite. You have affordable housing on top of an established neighborhood and our homes may have difficulty maintaining value. Just to kind of reiterate what one of my neighbors said previously up here is that, you know, Cameron Crossing might be considered a rural area, but the neighborhood has really built itself to be its own version of that suburban life. You know, it's a neighborhood that families can take, take walks in a quiet area, kids can ride their bikes around the block or draw chalk on the streets. You know, safety is, safety levels is something that I'm really concerned about. Like during the school year, school buses make stops only a short distance from mechanical drive already. And the kids, kids are crossing streets all the time. You know, the daycare center, as we know, that's even closer to the site. So there's a lot of kids playing outside in that radius. Drivers are still speeding through, coming off of Shotwell Road, still pushing 45 to 55 miles an hour. And now you have this apartment where people are coming and going all hours of the day, adding to the traffic pattern and all I see is clutter. And one, one small remark I did want to add about that is that Cameron Crossing is not a neighborhood where every child that lives there is going to one day turn 18 and never have to take the school bus again. A lot of homes are actually rented with young kids, which means new families with kids are going to occupy these homes, one lease after another. You're always going to have that K through five age group living in, in the neighborhood, taking the bus or playing outside. You know, driving has become a distraction enough as it is and I'm just afraid adding to the problem might lead to something disastrous, especially if you're having kids there in it for an indefinite period of time. I know there's a need for affordable housing. I, I know a lot of you on the board are excited about this project, but the acreage behind Cameron Crossing right now is just not feasible for a project of this magnitude. I think there's way too many factors that are being overlooked and that the town needs to take a really hard look at. You're just going to be creating a city within a city with everything piled on top of each other and, and I don't see a lot of benefit. So I just hope that the board takes these concerns seriously and that ultimately the builder can find another site. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Dave Naderman. I live at 59 Liam Street. So I'm not directly impacted by this, but I wanted to start out and say, good faith, the meaning, is a broad term used to encompass an honest deal. In good faith, I'm supposed to pick up my dog's poop in my neighborhood. And I'll be honest, I'm sorry, guys. Every once in a while, I forget. So that is how my good faith is, that this is going to be worked out, right? Good faith has great intentions, but it's never really guaranteed. With that being said, we look at things like the parking. He mentioned a roommate, roommates have one car. In twin cities where there's infrastructure, yes, that's true. I lived in Raleigh where it's a bigger city. I had roommates when I was younger. I never lived in an apartment with a roommate who did not have a car. And we are now further out into the country. I travel at least an hour a day to work. My house has two cars, if not more. It's not something that's feasible in this area. You look at things where, where, where did this increased parking come from? The lot size didn't change much. They took away six units and I don't understand how you got more parking out of that. And I haven't seen the, the first rendering, so maybe I'm wrong, but I just don't see how the math adds up. And to come out with even more parking, it just seems outlandish. We looked at some of the pictures of the neighborhood and this big boundaries of huge trees. That's great, but there's trees in the picture. You can see directly through to those apartment complexes. So my good neighbor here is going to have to see lights from the parking lot because you have to have lights to make a parking lot safe. And now at night when he goes to bed, he's going to have to see that. That's not a good boundary. In a six-foot wall, that's just for looks. That's a beautiful thing. But it is again, something that sells people and, as like I do, we try to sell you on great things. And sometimes in good faith, they're not always the right thing. You look at research, low income housing or affordable housing is a great terminology and it's a scary terminology. I did research on this. Studies have shown that affordable housing does not always, I use that word always, decrease value properties around it or increase crime. But if you look at how long those research studies were done for, they were done for short periods of time, three to five years max, which means that over a decade, which we hope this community thrives and grows, those things do tick up. And if you look at the map of crime in Raleigh, the hotspots are where low income or affordable housing is. Now that doesn't mean that I'm against it. Everybody deserves a home. Everybody deserves a chance to have a good living, but it has to be done at the right scale. And this, as his words said, is the biggest project for this little area, this little area. The scale is just too huge to support this little small area of acres they have. It could be used for something different. What that is, I don't know. And I leave it in your, in my faith and you, that you guys will help decide what that is and, and make that future better. We already have this development in front of us that's going to impact where the, what is it, Popeyes and whatever's coming through. There's an entrance there, increased traffic. People mentioned earlier, their kids are moving these streets. I walk my dog on these streets. I see some of my neighbors walking their dogs all the time. And now we're going to increase more traffic through there. It's just not feasible for a road that already has people coming through at 45 miles an hour and we only have a four-way stop sign. And then you have a road where a gym, and I don't understand why people who go to a gym have to park on the road to be closer to the front door when there's a parking lot that's already available there, right? Until that's even cleared up, you can't make that traffic through there go. I have a sedan. I can't fit through with another car, most of the time. So traffic is already stopped and plugged up there. There's just too much going on. So again, I hope in good faith that you guys make the right decision. And if it does come to light that this is going to be a project that pushes forward, that the right changes are made to accommodate the size of our small community and still keep our community intact without affecting them directly or in a negative impact way. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you this evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. No one else. I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you all for coming and for your commentary and your comments. I can assure you, council has taken those and will continue to take those into consideration. With that, is there any further questions or comments from council? Mr. Sims?
Yes, sir. Just comments to the rest of the council. So two, two things just really stand out to me. I have huge concerns for the parking. The main reason is I was looking at the income that they were talking about and then I, I just ran some numbers here and looked at something as far as in 2022, the census bill for the town of Clayton, the median household is 71,000, just say, just round it off, 71,690, just say 72,000. Kind of going in line with the numbers they have here. If you look at that, can we honestly say that is a one-income seller? Is that really a one-income? I think for the most part, we'd probably say it's probably a two. So does that parking really suffice for what is in those apartments? Number two, my other concern, which you already expressed it, is, is the traffic. Again, I think Councilwoman Andrea brought up a good point about Ranch Road and as the mayor said about looking at the statistics as far as the turning of it and the percentage. My concern here again is that, as I've been on here on this council, we have denied projects and we have approved projects. There's also a lot of projects in the town of Clayton that had already been approved that we're waiting to be in developed. I, I just would love to see the actual impact once Ranch Road is done, so we can kind of see what that does with our particular traffic. I, I just think that we don't wait to see the actual impact of certain things that we're trying to impose. We're just boom, 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 rushing to literally get it done and then hopefully that'll be taken care of because of the things that we have on the books. Let's take care of some of the things on the books and then from there see the impact of it and then start making some of these decisions. But also want to say to the citizens that here's also some reality. This is reality, right, wrong or indifferent. Growth will continue to come. It's, it's going to happen. I think we have sometimes a, and I live, of course, right here in the town of Clayton. I think we have a problem sometimes when things or people move next to us, all right? But if you don't have the growth, then when we start complaining about the roads, improvement to the library, hey, we, we need more of this or we need more of that, this is how a lot of that is paid for at the end of the day. So for me overall, I'm still struggling with this project. Actually, those who knows me, I'm big time, actually I'm, I'm for developing, for growth. Of course, it's how we grow. And I liked, I actually liked the project. I think it fills a need that is void here in Clayton, but I'm just struggling with where it was at. As I was able to see Ranch Road completed, the development to Shotwell, I would feel a lot more comfortable with this, but that's my input.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Archer?
Yes, of course.
I had a question because parking has come up quite a bit with this board as well as the planning board. I believe this is the first multifamily development we've seen come through under the new code, if I'm not mistaken. And so maybe I'm mistaken, but I believe the calculation used for the parking is per our code.
Yes, that's correct. So the, the UDO is requiring for the one bedroom unit, it's one parking stall and 1.25 for each two and or more bedroom unit. And then there's a .25 guest space. So they're, they're using the methodology of the, of the new UDO to calculate that.
I appreciate that. And, you know, that is a really interesting point for all of us to think about because this is a new code that has been in effect in Clayton just since January 2nd of this year. And the standards that they're using to calculate this parking as well as several things about this development are, are new to us. And in fact, they are based on updated, more modernized standards. So it's, it's interesting because as we're looking at these numbers, they are very different from what we've seen in the past. However, our code from the past was written in the seventies or the eighties. And so I think what we're doing here is we're trying to flesh that out. Where's the compromise? Where can we ask for more? And where can we honor these newer, more modern standards where not everything in town is just big parking lots? But anyway, I had some other comments unless, did you have a question? You want me to continue? Okay. Well, I was just going to, for my, my comments for the board to consider. And I really appreciate all of you who have come out this evening. It's, it's so good to see people participating in the process and seeing you at the planning board meeting as well. But I guess for me, there's just very rarely a perfect project where there are only positives and no negatives. So when I look at this one and I think, you know, we don't have anything like this in Clayton. We are talking about a high-quality affordable product that we desperately need for working-class folks. And so there are a lot of things about this project that I don't think are ideal, that I don't think are perfect. When we talk about the parking, when we talk about contributing to traffic on Shotwell and Business 70, traffic is a topic we talk about a lot here. We all get stuck in traffic as we're commuting around here. It is a pain. I ride in it many days a week as I go to my job. But the nature of traffic, the truth is, they never build as much as you need ahead of time, you know? Just when they get it solved, they, they solve your traffic problem, more people show up and more development shows up. And then you go through that crunch. So it's this constant crunch and fix and crunch and fix. And we have two fixes hopefully in the works with the Ranch Road extension and the Shotwell intersection improvements. And I don't think those are going to solve all of our problems, but I do think it would help. I also think about this property owner and denying this application for traffic, you know, then where in Clayton would anything get approved? Would we ever get a Target or a Chick-fil-A or any of the other things that we seem to want if we're going to deny things for traffic? And I know there's, there's a limit and that's for this board to try to figure out where, where they're at on that. So there are many things that I don't see as perfect or good about this project. However, I think we're getting affordable housing that's built well, that's built according to new standards, that we actually fought really hard to get into our, our new code. And I'm, I'm happy to see that it's finally coming to fruition, that we're getting something high-quality. that we're getting something high-quality like this. So, I really like the design, the building materials, the affordability. I think we've seen two meetings in a row, the applicant making compromise after compromise. I mean, we're getting trees kept, more trees planted. We're getting balconies. We're getting traffic promises. We've all heard it here tonight. So, when I do kind of my final calculation and I'm weighing this out, for me at this time, the pros outweigh the cons. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Casey?
Thank you for that, Councilman Archer and Councilman Sims. I have quite a few things like running through my head now, too. First, I want to say, first, I want to say kudos to the planning board and the questions they ask and the thought, the process they put to get us here today. Because I think they helped set the tone for some of the concessions, Megan, that you mentioned earlier. So, kudos to them. Kudos to the community because y'all came researched. You came with thoughtful, considerable ideas. And you came speaking, you know, with heart and honesty, and we appreciate that. For me, I'm still torn about this. Maybe me just getting it all out will help my thought process. But you know, I consider this a workforce housing project, not a affordable housing project. And there's, for me, a project like this is warranted in our community. And if it's done well, it'll benefit not only the people that live there, but it'll also benefit the whole community because we have a lot of jobs that we're trying to fill. We have a lot of needs that are not being met. So, I see the benefit for that. You know, but better road, of course, we wouldn't have to worry about a workforce housing project. Nor would you have to worry about home values. For me, this is a project that is being built well. We've seen some of the concessions that the developers made. And where we live within the proximity of Raleigh, no matter what's been built, no matter how quality or not, it's going to be expensive, right? I mean, it doesn't matter what's being built, they're still going to charge arm and a leg. And just kind of put this in context, too. A $250,000 house with a 30-year mortgage at a 7% interest rate, that monthly payment's over $1,600 a month. And this particular project is not very far, the rental rates are not very far off for this particular project. And then some of the things that the developer's doing regarding, you know, background checks and verification, stuff like that. I'm excited, I'm excited to see. To answer the question regarding connectivity for the Summit Drive and the, I think, what the Bobbit Road, or not Bobbit Road, but Blackley Road or something like Blackley Street. At some point in time, hopefully, those roads do get connected because that is a complete street, a grid network that is important to the community. And by that being done, typically that's done when a developer does unfortunately come in and have a project. And then us as council and staff encourage that connectivity. So, there makes it better travel between the different places. But you know, I understand some of the concerns from the community. This is an infill project. Infill projects are never, are never pretty. There's a lot of concessions that have to be made. There's a lot of considerations that have to be made. I'm still hung up on that condition regarding the Shotwell Road, Cameron Drive intersection. I appreciate the developer. I'm trying to think through, and maybe somebody else could have some add to this. Like, you know, if they're willing to make their portion, would we go, what, to Campo or would we go to DOT and see at some point in time, you know, can we get a stoplight there? Because I feel like that would benefit the community along with some of the other concessions that the developers made. I don't know if y'all have any thoughts on that or so. But understanding the other improvements that are being done in that area as well. But I'll just kind of throw that question out there if anybody's willing to answer it.
Josh Gilbert, Engineering Director. In terms of getting NC DOT on board or funding from DOT, usually they're following their STIP, the State Improvement Transportation Plan. If there's no programming for such a project or not inside the MTP, I do think it would be somewhat difficult to get additional funding from DOT. So, I think it would, also for LAPD project, I think that would be somewhat difficult if it's not at least programmed into a plan. So, likely, the funding would either come from all, from the town or developer contributions or ratio of the two if there was going to be improvements there.
Okay, thank you. That was the most politically correct answer of the evening right there. That was so good. All right.
So, one comment I want to make is what we're voting on tonight is the zoning. We're not voting on the final, rendering the final approval of this project. I think part of what this does, and I was impressed by the developer and his willingness to have conversations, make concessions. I think that's a great way to start. And I think that we have an opportunity now to really flesh out what we feel like the best conditions, the best opportunities for this project could be. And we've got time now to do that. So, that's my opinion. We've got time to flesh this out and talk about a stoplight and talk about the other conditions we want, that we would like to see from the developer. I think that gives us an opportunity to come out with the best possible solutions.
I was going to say, one question maybe for the planning director because I'm not as schooled up on UDO just yet as well. If the rezoning goes through tonight, does this council actually see any of the next steps in the entitlement process in terms of site plan approval? Or is this the only opportunity to be able to add conditions? And if that is the case, those conditions need to be clear here as to how they will then be implemented by staff on the next level?
Yeah, the latter is correct. So, this is the master plan and the conditions is what staff will then take. And the applicant, when they're ready, they'll submit the TRC, the site plan. And that's when we'll get the minutia of the project's details. So, we will need to have the conditions clarified tonight. I have some notes here, but that's something that we will need to make sure we have clear. Any modifications to those conditions, we'll need to make sure that that's also clear and included in the ordinance as well. Because council, we won't be taking the site plan back to council.
And so, just for everybody in the neighborhood, in the past, before this new code, everything would come back to this council for approval. But the way our new UDO code, it does allow for some smaller projects to go directly to planning and planning board to get all the kinks worked out and for the approval. So, that's what the discussion is. Historically, everything would come back to us. But now, some smaller projects with the way things are written can just go straight through and get approval by planning board and planning department. So, what they're saying is that if the council decides to vote in favor of the rezoning tonight, anything that the council wants to see as a stipulation in this agreement is going to have to be, is going to have to be spoken into the record by this council this evening. And once it is done, there's no additional amendments that the council can make because it would go directly to you guys.
Correct. There are some changes that might render, coming back to council, like a major modification, for instance. But other than that, what y'all see tonight, this evening, and act on is what we would take forward. And sometimes applicants, markets change. They might have a reduction in density or might need an increase in density. And those are things that we'll consider. The UDO hasn't stepped out, minor modification or a major modification. Major modification would require, again, to going back before council to modify the approved master plan and conditions. So, there is an opportunity, but that is pending changes that qualifies, either one or the other. So, I would definitely just echo your comments, Mayor, about the finality.
I didn't echo nothing, so I'm getting ready to echo. So, y'all ready? Right, let's roll.
Yes, sir.
Number one, I'm a florist. That's my profession. And how things look matters to me. So, I'm not interested in the least expensive way to cover up a building. I'm looking for color and texture and pattern. I'm looking to ride by your project and go, wow, that's beautiful. What is that? I'm looking for something that exceeds the aesthetic of what's already there. I'm looking for really nice landscape above and beyond what is required. Like, what it looks like matters to me. So, you know, we got people in the neighborhood. So, to the neighbors, let me say this, there are worse projects that could be in your backyard. And you know, as long as we're putting it out there, I want to make sure that what these neighbors have coming to their neighborhood is nice to look at. And so far as, we don't really have tall buildings in Clayton. And it's, you know, but that's common. And the reason we don't have tall buildings in Clayton is because we never had a ladder truck in the fire department. And now, we got, you know, almost a $2 million ladder truck. So, it will allow to go up because the cost of land won't be allowed to go. We don't have that much land to go out. I'm very appreciative for the attitude that this developer has shown to the neighborhood. I have seen completely opposite. And for that, I'm truly appreciative. But what I am looking for in a project like this is, to this gentleman's point in the back, like, how's that, how are those two cars in the parking deck supposed to back out and make a turn and get out of that parking space? It looked very narrow from what I was looking at as well. But I want things that are aesthetically beautiful. And you know, it does, and maybe it's not the most high-end product that's out there on the market to make this happen. But there are ways to create champagne taste on beer budget. And I'm looking champagne taste for this neighborhood. Okay. Sure.
One more question, just to clarify about this process. So, with conditional zoning, that's when we have this opportunity to work, to get the best product. You know, they get some concessions, we get some concessions. Under the current zoning, so I just wanted to make sure I had my logic straight. It could come in with a tall building, lighting, parking lot, smaller buffers, customers coming all day, you know? You know, so it could be more of like a parking lot with a tall building, people coming and going all day, not the buffers we've kind of negotiated for. It could be tighter buffers, those sorts of things. Okay, I saw you nod, Bruce, so I'm thinking I'm on the right track.
Yeah, that's, so the current zoning is CRM, corridor commercial. And there are uses that are permitted by right that are, a point was made about intensity and landscaping impacts. Landscaping, lighting, use, operation, you know, you have a commercial use, they're going to theoretically close at a certain time. But without going down in the weeds, the uses right now in our table of uses, 4.25 allows for the commercial uses by right. They would come in through a site plan review. We would apply a perimeter buffers. You do have lighting, photolumen maximums that are allowed. We look at a lighting plan. And we look at these, the setbacks of the buildings. So, the height of that building could be up to 60 foot based on the current, the current UDO, the current zone districts. So, you could have a high building. Most commercial development is not that high. I mean, it'd be my surprise if I saw McDonald's, that was about 60 foot. But you never know. But joking aside, that's what the standard allows. Answer your question.
The other thing I want to say really quick, because you know, a lot of traffic and cars parking and so forth. I would like to request, Mr. Manager, that, you know, we give some more investigative study to that area, whether we have some police do some monitoring different times of the day. Can we find out, you know, what times there are traffic parked on both sides of the street? Can we make sure that a fire truck can access that neighborhood at any time that it needs to? Like, that kind of stuff. That's the least we can do.
Noted. We can go ahead and add that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion. Before I do so, to our town attorney, I have written down eight conditions. And I don't know what's the most efficient way to deal with that.
We should probably work from your list because I have five.
Well, okay, let me clarify the first one because I'm not entirely certain. But I believe there was an agreement to a condition for street trees. Was that the first condition you mentioned to them? Okay, well then, scratch that one from the list.
I like that. But it was the condition that, if I believe correctly, it was the buffer. They do not, they said they're not going to mess with the buffer along Cameron, that for that development. And so, instead of grading it, they would keep it existing. So, there's some, definitely some mature trees back there. And they put the fence up as well. So, I don't know.
Okay, then for the applicant, my apologies for not paying closer attention. Was that first condition you agreed to, to retaining the mature trees within the buffer? Okay. And you were willing to conditionalize that? Okay, thank you. The second condition I had was regarding balconies. Oh, actually, so this condition can be combined balcony and/or a patio for each unit? Is that correct? A balcony or a patio for each unit? They are willing to pay for a traffic study? And actually, Attorney Colley, you may have had better language regarding the signal?
I have some.
Okay.
Well, I had to maintain, number one, maintain the mature buffer between the townhomes, balconies or patios for all units. Number three, with respect to the traffic signal at Shotwell, the developer will pay for a study, will pay for design, and will pay for a proportional share of the cost of signalization when signalization is determined to be warranted.
Okay. Is that okay? The next one I had was in regard to the cul-de-sac. Did you have language or did you want me to state mine?
My last two were modifications of 30 and 31.
Okay.
In that, on 30, with respect to street parking, signage, striping, the developer would pay the costs thereof. And with respect to 31, which is constructing road improvements and mechanical drive to remove cul-de-sac, maintain driveways, and permit new driveways and pay the costs thereof.
Could you say the last sentence, please?
It's just adding to number 31 that the developer would pay the associated costs.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Then, can we consider this dialogue we just had as the adding and acceptance of the condition?
The one item I wanted to comment on, like the pay for the signal is just some sort of timeframe on that so that we're not, like 10 years from now, if it never happens, that
Excellent point.
we're stuck with an expense that we're not budgeting.
Yeah. I think we've done, we've done it different ways other times. We've done it with the number of certificates of occupancy. And then we have another one that's time limited for a year. Is there a?
I got one question. So, are you saying the timing of when the payment is required? Or you're saying when the, timing of when the signal would have to be installed?
When the payment is required, I guess, is what I'm thinking. I'm just thinking of, you know, this is affordable housing, so we're not cash flush. In like year five or 10, we're not going to be able, we can handle it during the construction budget. We'll have funds to pay for something, you know, when we're in operations, it's harder.
Yeah, so typically, the way that we've done these in the past would be, if your study comes out to say yes, the signal would be warranted and DOT agrees that it would be. You would then advance your design development for the actual improvements to a certain point where, or to full design, to a certain point where the engineer record could then provide us with an estimated cost of installation at the time. At that point, if it's based on proportional share, whatever the proportional, if it's done by trips or whatever, if you're 10 trips out of 100, then whatever your engineer's estimate would be, the 10% number would, you know, whatever the proportion share would then just be a fee and lieu to the town, certainly prior to certificate of occupancy for the building. So, if we can just, if you want to do it that way, that it has to be, the fee and lieu has to be satisfied prior to certificate of occupancy. Going to look at the development staff to see if that's a, yeah. So, that may be either a building.
at building, building department or certificate of occupancy would be the two places that I would be recommending. So if certificate of occupancy works for you guys, we can do it as that.
That's fine.
Thank you. So I'm seeing Attorney Colley, you appear to be writing that down. And then if I could ask you just procedurally, how I need to make sure these conditions are part of my motion?
Do we have the developers' agreement with these conditions?
Yes.
Then the motion would be to approve, subject to all of the written and stated conditions.
Are those all the conditions that we added?
Everything that I had, he has read out to me. So unless I missed something.
Those were the five I had.
Okay. Okay. Then Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve to adopt ordinance 2024-05-02, subject to all written and stated conditions inconsistent with the future land use map. I make a motion to approve that while this request is inconsistent with the future land use map and the adopted 2024 comprehensive growth plan, it, oh, in that, and this is coming off of the motion sheet that was provided by staff, just FYI. The property is classified as high density residential in the future land use map. Goal LU1 seeks to preserve Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Strategy LU1.1.2 looks to support residential development at varying densities based on the future land use map, associated character, area descriptions, and other relevant plans. Goal LU3 encourages a range of housing types and lot sizes that will meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes, and ages. Goal LU4 provides safe, sound, and well-maintained housing in neighborhoods. The future land use map will be updated to be consistent with this rezoning request to an appropriate corresponding land use category per North Carolina general statutes 160D-605A. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive growth plan encourages residential uses in this area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
All right, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the rezoning based on conditions stated in the record. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And opposed, like son.
Aye.
And motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the wastewater allocation.
Mayor, Town Council, if I may, just real briefly, I want to speak to, since this was adjustment to the agenda, there is a wastewater application in your packet. Requests greater than 10,000 do require approval of Town Council. There is, due to the reduction density from the planning board meeting to the meeting now, the new request with reduction to 90 units is actually 24,360 gallons per day. Town Clerk has a resolution with that update to it. So that would be the actual request tonight, associated with wastewater for the project.
Is there a resolution number associated with that? My apologies.
Yes, it's 2024-45, correct me if I'm wrong, clerk. Yes, 2024-45.
Okay. I'm prepared to make a motion.
You see.
I would like to recommend adoption of ordinance 2024-45. Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of 2024-45. That's the wastewater allocation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son.
Aye.
And motion carries. All right, thank you. Tim in a recess. I'd like to call our meeting back to order. And up next on the agenda is establishing an occupancy tax in the town of Clayton.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Town Council, Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. So want to give a little background here on what this is. So talking about the occupancy tax, so this was first requested almost 20 years ago. So this has been a long time coming. This, the Clayton tax will be in addition to the existing 3% occupancy tax that the county already has in place. There's several other towns in Johnston County that have this 2% tax. So Smithfield, Selma, Benson, Kenley, and the Four Oaks legislation was also granted by the General Assembly at the same time as Clayton's, and that was back in October 25th of last year. So the occupancy tax is collected by anyone providing accommodation. So hotels, bed and breakfast, Airbnb, VRBO, campground. So anything that's within the corporate limits of the town of Clayton will be subject to this. So it's based on room nights. Just to be clear, so this is typically people coming out of town, out of Clayton, coming, staying at hotels and these accommodations. So really, this is a way for us to capture that, capture revenue from those folks coming to visit here and be able to market and roll back into to have additional tourism marketing in our area here. So by law, it requires it to be spent two thirds on marketing and one third on tourism related projects that can be capital projects. And again, all of that with the goal, as they say in the tourism industry, of heads in beds. All of these revenues by the Clayton occupancy tax must be used for the direct benefit of Clayton. I just mentioned that doesn't supplant the 3% funds that, that the county already has, that they help market as part of their, if you see billboards, the work that the Johnson County Visitor Bureau does already to promote Clayton, the visitclayton.org website and such, all that stuff is, this will be additive in addition to that, and funds directly related to marketing Clayton and the things it has to offer to visitors. So if adopted, this tax will go into effect August 1st, 2024. It's going to be 60 days from the adoption date, and then the next, then the following first of the month. So how it works is accommodation providers will remit taxes to the town that were collected. Those go to the county tax office to be put in a special account that is earmarked for Clayton by, for the, in the Johnson County Visitor Bureau, in the Tourism Authority, in their account. And then the Johnson County Visitor Bureau works with the town of Clayton to design the marketing campaign and deploy those resources. So from there, the next steps, if adopted, would be to coordinate with those accommodation providers in terms of brick and mortar, places that are there. We have the comfort, we have the comfort suites, and we have McQuade's bed and breakfast. And then again, the Johnson County Visitor Bureau will assist with us with Airbnb and some of those others that are required to, to remit as well. We'll then work with the Johnson County Visitor Bureau staff to develop that marketing plan and deploy it, and can then work with them to continue monitor collections and the efficacy of their marketing campaigns. And then in our, in the ordinance before you, it also requires them to provide quarterly reports of revenues and expenditures and a detailed annual report at each fiscal, each fiscal year by request. So that's an overview. I'm happy to take any questions about the program or any kind of clarification that you would want. And staff's recommendation would be to adoption. I would all just also say, just be, the Johnson County Visitor Bureau have been very helpful in their work in the General Assembly, as well as the Clayton Chamber of Commerce, their focus, this was on their legislative agenda, and something that they were helping with as well. So great thing for the community, a great step for us. So that'll take any questions you may have.
Questions or comments for staff? All right. Mr. Sims, lead the way.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2024-42.
Second.
Could we have a? I'm sorry, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure and clarify, I believe we need to, is this a public hearing? So I want to make sure we open a public hearing before we, before we make a motion.
This has been noted as a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Mike Sims for a motion.
All righty then. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2024-42.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of resolution 2024-42. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is a quasi judicial hearing, 2023-183AA Clayton Pawl SUP modification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a quasi judicial hearing. If the clerk wouldn't mind swearing
If the clerk wouldn't mind swearing anyone in who wishes to speak.
Anyone wishing to offer testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Listen. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, staff is bringing us before you today. This was originally approved as a special use permit in November of 2022. The applicant is now seeking to make modifications to the site, which caused it to come back to you today. Here, they were approved in the former Unified Development Code in section 155.77, number three here, an increase of 5% or more in the approved floor area unless proposed additional areas, 500 square feet floor area or less, requires it comes back before you for approval. And so here, we're here today to amend that site plan as well. They, these were the approved conditions back in 2022. The conditions of approval and any other included with the associated site plan, this is the aforementioned site plan that was approved at the time of the SUP. Should you approve today, it would be updated with the new site plan that's been provided as the administrative amendment. This was included in your packet as well, just also have it here for your presentation. Like I said, this was approved in November 22. The increase, the former vet office that was approved was approximately 1,200 square feet. They're requesting to increase that size from the 1,200 to 2,992 square feet in size. Additionally, they're also wanting to amend the stormwater on the site. They're proposing another stormwater retention pond and expanding the one on the bottom. I have additional information there. I'm here on the left, we have the previously approved plan and on the right is the newly proposed amendment. Just to highlight some areas for you real quick. This little area up here, if you can see, this is where, this is the blue, the floor plan of the originally approved vet clinic. And on the left here now, you can see that it has expanded in size there. Additionally, there is an expansion of the stormwater pond and the new proposed plan here as opposed to the original that was approved in 22. There's another new stormwater pond at the end of this parking lot that was not there in 22, but now is on this proposed modification. And there's been an additional parking spots in order to meet the code requirements for the expansion of the vet clinic. Just a zooming version of the vet clinic prior that was approved. There you can see that with the acquired parking spaces. And then this is again, is just an up close view of the vet clinic now. And so the applicant is not here. Town was hoping to bring this to you as a technical correction since the former UDC required it come before you since there was a deviation greater than the 5%. Should you have any questions, staff will do its best to answer that, but the applicant has sent us here with full faith that we would be able to present this to you today.
All right. Any questions or comments for staff? Hearing, yes, go ahead. Oh, well, hearing, no questions for staff, no one else wishing to speak, no need for rebuttal. I'll call the council into deliberation and give the floor to Mr. Casey.
I make a motion to approve 2023-183AA.
I'm willing to second, but do we need to state for the record that the application meets all four findings of fact? Okay.
The application meets all four findings of fact.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second for the approval of 2023-183AA. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, like son, motion carries. Next under new business is a multifamily housing revenue bonds resolution.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have a affordable bond resolution, which is similar to the resolution that council approved back in, I think it was in December, early December for the, you know, the project, minimum project. This is for the Shabbat apartment projects. Typically, this is where the town's going to act as a conduit debt issuer for this project. Typically, affordable housing bonds are issued by municipal or county housing authority. That doesn't exist in Johnston County, so the burden, if you will, falls upon the town. The town will have no obligation to repay these bonds, only facilitating the issuance, and that allows the bonds to be tax exempt and qualify for affordable housing credits per the IRS Revenue Code. So the bonds, again, will not constitute a debt of the town or any pledge of faith, um, good faith, a credit of the town. And the town's willingness to act as a conduit debt issuer must not be construed as approval for this proposed affordability housing project for any other purpose, including and not limited to zoning, land use permitting, or any other aspect of the project that requires or may require town approval for any department or agency of the town. So it's just basically we're agreeing to act as a conduit debt issuer. So they, the bonds, if and when they're issued, they'll qualify as tax exempt and they can receive the affordable tax credits. Any questions or?
Questions or comments for staff? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-36. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of resolution 2024-36. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son, motion carries. Up next is the electric system revenue bonds resolution.
Good evening. We're asking council to approve the resolution and make application with the LGC to issue bonds not to exceed $6 million. The RFP for the bond resolution went out in early April, April 8th, with the responses received back on April 30th. The application is due to the LGC tomorrow, so it can go on their agenda for their meeting in June. We will be coming back to council at the next meeting with the series resolution for the bonds. This is basically could allow the town to reimburse itself approximately $2.5 million for previous projects that have been completed and will also provide financing for roughly $3.5 million of future new development, the infrastructure, the transformers, the wire, the per lot cost is approximately, I think we're estimating about $4,000 per lot cost. So this, this is going to put us back into a, kind of restore the cash position, the electric fund, if you will, if we had the conversation back during the work session about the depletion of the cash, days cash on hand dropped because of maintaining our inventory.
All right. Any questions or comments for staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Question, it's approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2024-37, minor detail. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Now we'll jump on to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. Great meeting earlier today for the work session. Appreciate everybody bearing with us, a lot of information thrown at you, but looking forward to the meeting on the May, on May 20th, where we can formally present the recommended budget for fiscal year 25 and have, or have the public here for the public hearing for that. A couple of items from tonight with the advisory boards, code of conduct, I'll work with the clerk to make sure that all those advisory boards are notified, that they've got to get that signed and returned to us, the acknowledgement sign returned to us prior to their next meetings so that we can keep them on, on pace. And I will be working with our communications staff and others to draft that letter that you requested earlier today for the support of Johnston County Community College as asked to the state, or excuse me, to the county. Only other item I wanted to touch on this evening is just a reminder that tomorrow, the town of Clayton is having our first job fair. 3:30 PM to 6:30 PM here in Town Hall, right here in this room, we'll be having representatives from every single department within the town. Even if the job for the public or anybody interested in coming, if there's not a job currently posted, we'd love to still have some folks come in, talk to us, maybe leave their resumes behind. We have a lot of growth opportunities coming as well as some considerations that are in front of you with the FY25 budget coming up that may create some of those opportunities for people. So anybody out there that's interested in starting a career or continuing a career with local government will be here tomorrow from 3:30 to 6:30. That's it.
General Assembly.
One other thing, based on today, the occupancy taxes, as Pat didn't want to interrupt while he was doing his presentation, as Patrick mentioned, that's a long, a lot of years in the making. That's going to give us some opportunities to the additional revenue to be able to complete some projects down the road. So just wanted to make sure that we did have a thank you out there for Representative White and Senator Sorey that obviously supported us through that and all the rest of the members of the General Assembly that supported our request for that earlier this year, or late last year, excuse me.
Great, very much appreciated. Town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
Thank you. Take Your Child to Work Day. I'm excited about this. Nathaniel, Communications Director, I give you the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Tonight, I have the pleasure to bring something special to you. On April 25th, we had our third annual Take Your Child to Work Day. This year, we had 30 children come out with their parents and this was the best one we had yet. It was the most interactive, hands-on experience these kids have had with local government. And I'm really proud of all of our departments that participated and really just brought their A-game. And I really believe that not only the kids have a good time, they also got to see that level of public service that we all have. And so without further ado, I'd like you to see the video that we've made from today.
Awesome.
Um, I think he's a building inspector and he like inspects houses and see like if they're built right and if they're like on, like built, yeah, built right.
Yeah, I think she builds buildings and I think she makes like houses and stuff. And I think she plans out the houses in. Yeah, I think she does that.
Draw on the, draw on the eraser board.
Evolve, she works, like she communicates, I don't know, and she prints out stuff and works on computers.
Go to fires. Go to meetings and print out paper.
I just want to tell everybody my birthday is coming up and I'm five years old. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
That's fantastic.
Thank you all again for supporting that.
Yeah, thank you all. It's perfect. Right. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion or public comment. Anyone wish to speak? Please step forward and state your name for the record.
It's been a long night, but it's been longer for a lot of y'all. I just wanted to say I thank you all for your service in a day and age where people are degrading politicians. You know, I think it's, it's wonderful for the work you do. I saw just how much goes into it, each discussion, so it was unreal, first time sitting in something like this. But I'm Jason Castro. I am a physical and occupational therapist by trade. I've been working with geriatrics the past 18 years. That's been my specialty. Thought I'd be with athletes one day and here I am working with senior citizens. But I've seen how tough it's been to, for seniors, how tough it's been for assisted living communities, independent living communities, skilled nursing facilities, and decided to actually get out of therapy and go into administration. So I am an administrator of a brand new building here in Clayton called Kingswood Reserve. It is off 42, it is right behind Mezcalitas and the State Employee Credit Union. I'm inviting you today to come on out. We're doing a little celebration on the 16th of this month between 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock. Come out, meet our residents, come see the community. I mean, it's a gorgeous community, it's a CCRC community. We have 68 independent living units. We have 42 assisted living units and 21 memory care units. My call is to create a great culture for these folks, a great environment. Right now, it's a tough industry. It's a real tough industry. People are getting out of it instead of running toward it. So that's why I stay in front of you today. Please support us. These seniors need it. Johnston County's needed this for a long time. I was a home health therapist trying to, trying to support this area and I had to send people all over to just go to skilled nursing facility, assisted living facility, independent living facility. So I am blessed to be in this community. It's been an absolute blessing and I just can't wait for the next couple of years. So again, thank you all for your service and please come out and join us.
Awesome. Can we get that put on everybody's calendar? That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? All right. If not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Sims?
Yeah, I just would like to announce that on May 18th, I'm excited that we're having the second annual Class Sinclair basketball tournament, which the highlight of it is the Clayton Police Department against the Clayton Fire Department. Our very own chief will be, from the fire department will be playing in that one this year. I'm really excited because Captain Longer has gotten the churches involved and now we're going to have all four of these, going to be local community churches that's going to be competing for the overall championship and trophy. We're going to have free hot dogs, ice cream and soda and a DJ. So from 10:00 to 12:00 on May 18th, come out and have some fun. It was really, really, really good last year, so we're looking for a good crowd this year.
Awesome. And I would like to wish our chief of police a very happy anniversary. I'm sure that's the reason he is not at my meeting tonight. And I would also like to encourage him to participate in the basketball game. If the fire chief is going to play, then the police chief should play. Now, I know that y'all don't want the police chief to play because he way taller than all y'all put together, but if you give him the ball, he will dunk it. Right? I'm just saying. Too much risk there. All right. Any other comments from council? No. Oh, Mr. Casey.
Mr. Mayor and Town Manager, Sound Rivers, a local nonprofit organization that represents this area, has reached out to us regarding a letter of support. They have a program where they do what's, they're called trash traps and they're traps that are inserted in streams and tributaries that collect, I guess, trash that somehow or another through stormwater or whatever gets put in there. And so this is And so this is a letter just to support, nothing else, nothing more, where they're going to take these letters of support to the legislature and hopefully solicit some funding. And I hope that council would be behind just this, just general letter of support for this program. It's beneficial as this area grows, as we, you know, we continue to have the stresses and demands, you know, on our streams and tributaries, and we have trash. This is one, this is a program that's very beneficial to our community and, and our surrounding neighbors. So anyway, I'd hope that we could do that. Second thing is, I just want to appreciate town staff and Public Works for the Earth Day cleanup that we had for Earth Day, May the 20th, 22nd. Had a great turnout, picked up a lot of trash, very huge involvement within the community, and I just appreciate everybody's efforts. And it's great to see just a community rally around, just making and beautifying our neighborhoods, our streets, our greenways and stuff. So I'm proud of that. So that's all. Thank you.
Perfect. I don't have a problem at all with sending that, that letter out or whatever. All right. Anyone else? All right. If there's nothing else to come, anything else?
No, I just want to confirm that you guys want us, you want staff to go ahead and draft that letter and send it, but it seemed like we had consensus there, so.
That'd be great.
Get with folks and do it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else to come before this council this evening? If not, I will definitely entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.